Good morning, everybody. Welcome to our August 22 meeting of the Board of Supervisors. And if we could have a roll call, our roll call, please.
I'm having some difficulties here. Supervisor Wilson?
Here.
Supervisor Arroyo?
Here.
Supervisor Madron?
Present.
Supervisor Bone?
Aye.
And Supervisor Bushnell?
Good morning.
All right, and if you'll please join us for the Pledge of Allegiance.
My pledge of allegiance is that to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, limited and just as for all.
Great, thank you very much. And Madam CAO, do we have any changes to the agenda?
Good morning, Chair Madron. Not necessarily a change, but just one point of clarification. The agenda was originally posted with closed session at 12:00 a.m. I am fairly certain none of us-
I was here, no.
-planned to be here at midnight to hear closed session. We did repost the agenda to rectify that clerical error, and closed session will be heard at 12:00 p.m., noon today. So just wanted to bring that to attention and clarify that correction.
Great, appreciate that. And yeah, we do have closed session at noon. I know that's lunch hour, but I thought that it might be good just to get our business done so that the board can get out and take care of all their other duties. I know for myself, I'm out on the fires a lot and all, so lots of prayers for our community in regards to that. With that, and also, we're going to have some comment, I believe, from Scott on the offshore wind item, even though we're not pulling it, we'll provide opportunity for comment on that. So with that, I'm first going to start out with a proclamation, and this is in honor of national, or in recognition of National Recovery Month. And is somebody from DHHS here or sorts to receive, or should I just go ahead and read it into the record? No worries.
There's nothing.
Okay, great, come on up.
We're all inclusive.
Yes, yes. Okay, and I see a bunch more. It looks like we got plenty of DHHS in the House. Great, thank you. All right. Whereas September is National Recovery Month, and no matter what you're recovering from, there is help and others to walk beside and embrace a new way of living. And whereas early intervention, support, treatment, and recovery services for mental health challenges, substance use disorders, and other addictions are all included in Recovery Month. And whereas we must encourage relatives, friends, and community members of people with mental health challenges and substance use disorders to implement preventative measure, recognize the signs, and guide those in need to the appropriate early intervention, treatment, and recovery support service. And whereas countless lives have been impacted by drug use in Humboldt County, from the people who use drugs to their loved ones and the community around them. And whereas it is important to show people who are struggling that there are people in recovery who are succeeding and achieving and sustaining long-term recovery. And whereas many people who work in the field of addiction, including treatment, providers, sponsors, judges, attorneys, police officers, and other community partners, need to see recovery as possible in Humboldt to break the stigma and recognize the many success stories in our county. And whereas Recovery Happens in Humboldt County is a group of community members who are aiming to change the vision of the community and are kicking off National Recovery Month and the annual Recovery Happens in Humboldt picnic and chili cook-off on September 9 at Sequoia Park in Eureka. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the Humboldt County Board of Supervisors recognizes September as National Recovery Month and invites residents of Humboldt County to join in celebrating recovery. And I will say, in terms of reducing stigma, I think we all struggle with mental health issues at some level, to some degree. I know some days it's a little hard for myself just to get up and get back at it, so we're all in this together, so.
Thank you.
So my name is Dina Kellerman, and I'm the Chair of Recovery Happens in Humboldt.
Oh, sorry, let me get the mic down for you.
It is on.
There you go.
I'm entirely grateful to receive this proclamation for Recovery Happens in Humboldt, and I apologize, AOD, DHHS, and everybody is part of this picnic. I didn't mean to make it sound like we were separate because we're all-inclusive. And I, this is my hard-working friend and volunteer for Recovery Happens that's been helping with getting raffles and really putting the word out for this function. Hopefully this year it's going to be bigger than ever. And, I don't know what else to say, I'm just really grateful that I get to be a part of the bigger, the bigger vision of what recovery looks like.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you both very much.
Thank you.
Are you really talking? Your sweatshirts as you brought it in.
All right, any comments from the board? Yes, Supervisor Bushnell?
Thank you, Supervisor Madron, for bringing that proclamation, and I just want to, addiction probably follows every family at some point, most all families at some point. I know my family has had its fair share of problems with addiction, and I just want to say that I know Carrie, and I hope this is okay, Carrie, but I followed Carrie's addiction problems and now her success with battling addiction and her sobriety. I'm super proud of her and what she's doing for her family and her children, as well as everyone else. My son is seven years sober and has just made, it's made a huge difference to him and his life. And any support that anybody can get for substance abuse, no matter what your substance is, you may not think, you know, addiction goes beyond, you know, drug, it can be, it can be food, really. I mean, addictions are, it's broad. And so, I just really, you know, if you're battling any kinds of addictions and you're being successful at that fight, congratulations, because it's huge.
Here, here. Anybody else? Supervisor Arroyo?
Thank you. I'll just echo those sentiments and express appreciation for all that you do to support people in our community. I know there's so much stigma around, around people, you know, struggling with these chronic diseases, and I recently was able to attend a conference where I learned a lot about treating, treating addiction and moving people into recovery, the way that we treat other chronic diseases like COPD and hypertension, and that, you know, the success rate for people even taking their medication and continuing to make the lifestyle changes for those chronic diseases is similar to that for addiction and for substance use disorders. And I thought that was really powerful to consider that, you know, some of these more socially-accepted chronic diseases are also challenging for people to stay on track with and to get the correct treatment for. And I found that really, it changed my way of thinking, to think about it like that and to really be presented with that information. So I appreciate the work you do, and, you know, these are chronic diseases for many people, and treating them is a part of healthcare. So thank you for what you do to provide healthcare to people.
Supervisor Bone?
And, not to escape, I agree with everything that's being said, but if you want to tell people that they're being successful, like Carrie and things like that, please show up to the picnic. That's the most, I've been to the picnic, Carson Park, Sequoia Park, Carson Park, but the picnic's a great time, and it's a great time to do a one-on-one and meet people that recovered, and it'll reinvigorate you, so I'm saying that there is opportunities for a lot of the people out there. We're not going to save everyone, we're not going to, that's just some people, but it's the effort, one at a time. But I'm just saying, a good way, under an unstructured setting, is to come to the barbecue and see how hard they are working to better themselves and the community.
Supervisor Bushnell?
While we're on this subject, I want to bring up, we talk a lot about fentanyl and the substances that go around, and I have been talking with DHHS and public health about a little item called Whip-its, and it's an epidemic in Humboldt County and beyond. And they are these little cartridges that are used for whipped cream, actually, and they are, they're disgusting, they're all littered all over the county, they're an inhalant, they're sold mostly in smoke shops, and they're ruining people's lives. And I have been asking public health, I would love and want to bring a proclamation, I want them to be outlawed in Humboldt County, and they're terrible, disgusting little things. And they, they make you, they call it, I don't know what they do to your brain, but they make you, like, yeah, they're just, it's just a terrible thing. And young kids, there's no age, you can buy them, anybody can buy them. And it is well-used within Humboldt County, young kids, older kids, older people, and then they throw them out on the sides of the roads. And they, they have killed people, they, it's a huge chronic problem in Humboldt County, and I want to bring awareness to it, it's terrible. So you can, Carrie, you can, we're going to do public comment, and you could come up then and comment on that if you would like, but I just wanted to bring awareness to that.
Great, thank you very much. Supervisor Wilson?
Thank you, Chair. Again, I want to echo thanks for everybody who's working on these issues, because I think Supervisor Bushnell said it, which is addiction can come in all forms as well. I mean, we focus a lot on the drug addiction elements of what we, of, you know, the impacts to our society, but we can actually often see it in our own lives all over the place. And just, I know I always plug these, like, podcasts that I listen to, but Hidden Brain has an excellent one called The Paradox of Pleasure, which talks about the chemical issues, or whatever, you know, the chemical properties around addiction and how it's, and it can be a spectrum, you know, gambling or drugs, it can even be, and it was in this, in this, the person talked about, this was a person who actually is an expert in addiction, found themselves addicted to, and I don't want to sound trite, but vampire romance novels. And that sounds weird, but this person got so deep into this bizarre space that it really affected their lives. And what it showed within that was the chemical reactions that were caught, that were making that happen, and how the new science in addiction is helping to try and find the pathways for recovery for everybody in all of these addictions. And I know that sounds kind of trite, but it plays into the medical elements of how we treat these diseases. And I just appreciate you all, I know you guys are deep into this, and I know you've probably even heard this, what I was talking about, that it was a great education for me to really relate that back to just my life, other, you know, and then people around me, and I just really appreciate that. So thanks for your hard work.
Great, thank you for that. And we have a lot of other items on the consent agenda, but one in particular I wanted to highlight is item number 10, the Memorandum of Agreement related to emergence of offshore wind. And when we talk about addiction, while there are many different ways to recover and support systems out there, one of the best is jobs. You know, the more jobs we have and the more housing we have, I think that's a big part of trying to help people. So with that note, Scott Adair, would you like to speak on this item? Welcome.
Thank you, Supervisors. I'll try to be brief. My name is Scott Adair, I'm the Director of Economic Development for the County of Humboldt. Last year, your board directed staff and gave us guidance to engage with shareholders and to seek and develop relationships related to the emergence of the new offshore wind industry in California. Since that time, your economic development team has been working diligently to handle the charge that was given to us. We've spent several months and many resources and staff hours in negotiations with two international firms who are looking to do business in Humboldt County. This process has been extremely rewarding and represents true bread-and-butter economic development for our community. However, this process took quite a number of individuals and partnerships in order to achieve. I want to be very expressive in my gratitude, one, to the Board of Supervisors for continuing to give our division resources and support, especially during a time of budget crisis and other economic challenges that our organization faces and also facing the community. I want to thank the two board ad-hocs that were created around offshore wind, Supervisors Wilson and Arroyo, and Supervisors Bone and Bushnell for being so engaged in discussions related to offshore wind and the mitigation measures and steps that we, as a community, must take to ensure that this industry supports our community and in ways that our community deserves. I'd like to thank the CAO and her team for all of their support and resources as we worked with these two international companies to come to an agreement which will benefit Humboldt County workers and residents. I'd like to thank our external counsel, Julian Gross and Shoshana Baird, for their continuing wisdom and advice. And most importantly, I'd like to take, thank staff. Without economic development staff and the team that your board and the CAO has allowed us to assemble, and the talent therein, this would not have been possible. So we are very delighted to bring this agreement before your board today, this agreement with these two international wind developers. Through this agreement, these developers agree to support and promote and collaborate with existing and ongoing workforce development and economic development strategic planning efforts and processes within our community, to work aside those individuals who are championing those efforts, and not just the county's efforts, but also shareholders within the community, such as our Workforce Development Board, other nonprofits and agencies within the community, who are all working together to make offshore winds successful. With that, thank you very much for the opportunity to speak before you today, and appreciate your time.
Thank you very much. Supervisor Bone? Hang on, Scott, question?
Hey, Scott, yeah, I appreciate the job you're doing. I mean, it's, it's huge, and, you know, we've been hearing about this for five or six years, and I'm a proponent of it, of Indywind energy, obviously, as we know. But what I want to know, and I got hit up three or four times just yesterday, because every day, every day, it's something, you know, we're hitting milestones or perceived milestones. Are we, when, how long can we expect to at least get a timeframe when we actually have chains in the water instead of sticks? But chains in the water and are producing power. And I know there's a huge funding, you know, to get ready for it, sky cranes and heavy lifts and everything else. But people are asking, when will, when will we benefit from everything we're doing, you know, both for, you know, our carbon footprint and climate change and things like that? And I know it's not today, and I'm not asking, give me a day, but as you meet with these companies and stuff like that, I think it would be, we hear about all the stuff we're doing here, we hear about the grants, we hear about that, but I think it would be really great for the public if, instead of, if they get a broader picture of going, well, you know, we're targeting 2032 to be, you know, because four years ago it was going to be eight years, and we know it's going to be much longer than that. But I think to give people some idea, and to let people know, the other thing is, how much is going to take place? We have to build the kitchen before we bake the cake. So I mean, there's so much to do on the ground to get ready to do this. But if we could start giving, and I know this is way down the line, but put it in the back of your wallet, that we could get some timeframe, so, because I imagine everybody gets asked, when are we going to see them, when are we going to, you know, and, you know, what can we expect? And what are they going to look like when they're standing up over there on the island when they're building them and stuff like that? So those are questions I get asked, and it'd be great if we could give some answers to those down the line, I'm not asking today, six months, but it's something we need to focus on, I think, because in the word of the day, transparency, it'd be nice if the people had a little more, except, hey, we got another $2 million, we got another $5 million, we got another $800,000, and this is what you can expect to see payoff on it. So just, just for the normal public that doesn't have the insight we, oh, I don't even know that, but I mean, just as we move forward.
Right, you bring up a good point. It is several years out, if not more than several years, five to seven years out before we may see any real substantial, ongoing progress out on the peninsula related to offshore wind. There are a lot of studies and analyses that still need to be completed, there are still problems to resolve around procurement, for example. If we can't get procurement worked out, then there is no offshore wind project. What this agreement has done is it has committed the wind developers to, through that process and through those years, until we get to a point when turbines are actually affixed to floating platforms and tugged out to the wind energy area, that they will recognize and understand that our prosperity and economic livelihood as a community only is in their best interests and would serve their project well. And so while we're waiting for this project to actually come to fruition, they've agreed and understand that they need to work with the county and the community and the municipality and the cities and the nonprofits and our other community organizations, that we have, we had problems, economic problems and challenges before they came here, and we have plans in effect to try to resolve those, and they need to work with us. And that's part of what this agreement is doing for us until we get to that point, if we resolve all of those issues, where offshore wind can become a reality.
Okay, great, thank you. CAO Hayes?
Supervisor Madron, you bring up a good point, that one of the things we need to do early and often is start to socialize our community to what offshore wind is going to look like off of our bay. And one of the projects that Scott and his team is currently working on with some of our community partners is looking into establishing an immersive learning center where kids and community members can go and, you know, start to see and touch and feel and experience what turbines and their component parts might look like, and we're working with some of our developers on, you know, donated materials and things of that sort. So that's something that we hope that we might be able to get off the ground very soon so that we can start to show people what this is going to mean to us and what it's going to look like and how that is going to impact us and what that experience is going to physically feel like for us.
Okay, thank you. Supervisor Bone?
Yeah, it's just something that comes up a lot, about, hey, when's it going to happen? What's it going to look like? I mean, I got inundated last night, what's it going to do to our sport fishing and our, sport fishing was a big thing, what's it going to do with that? And we all know it's going to have an impact, but we're all bouncing around the, around the circle, we haven't heard anything definitive. And it's hard, I mean, Scott made a good point, Director Adair made a good point, procurement, people don't understand, it's tough to get stuff here. It's tough to, when you're limited on everything, so, I mean, and we've got to, we've got to build the infrastructure to take it off those, I mean, we can unload barges, we can do a lot of stuff, but we can't unload it on, I mean, we've shipped lumber for years on barges, but we can't get it out, we can't get a 600-foot or a 400-foot blade, you know? So these are all things that I think the people, if they had a better grasp of it, I think that, the more you know about it, the less you oppose something, I believe. So, and just to make things easy, I think that's one of the steps we need to do, and your interpretive center is a great idea. Even something as small as videos of the East Coast and everything else, and start small, something easy, go to the developer and says, hey, would you fund $5,000 a month and put a little interpretive center downtown, in Old Town, somewhere in Eureka, I mean, out at the marina? So people can just see videos. I mean, you don't have to put a blade, just so they could see what's going on. I mean, when we had the onshore project that was attempted, they showed how to put up a turbine in 90 seconds. You know, they had the speed, and they just went through the whole process. Was eye-opening.
Great, thank you. I'm going to bring us back to the agenda topic. Thank you for the extra information, I think the public absolutely appreciates that, and we're going to have a very in-depth conversation on this ongoing as we go along. Supervisor Arroyo?
I think my comments were going to take us a little further down the path of what's going on with procurement and permitting, and I don't think we need to go there given this item, so thank you for recognizing me, but I'll pull back.
Thank you, appreciate that. Okay, so any, excuse me, Supervisor Bushnell?
Can I move on, on the consent calendar?
Yes.
Thanks. I just want to recognize and congratulate Dave Jackson from Fortuna. He will be appointed to the Fortuna Fire District Board, he will be taking Glenn Stroh's spot, and so I thank him for being willing and congratulate them on getting someone of his caliber to that board. I also would like to recognize, you know, our consent item is just our everyday working, but we often, DHHS often has a lot of items, and on today's grant, or consent item, we have the Eureka regarding renovation of the emergency shelter facility known as Blue Angels, and then also professional service agreement with Arcata House partnership. And I really want to recognize that these are items that really are trying to help with our households population and help really with the problems that we have around Humboldt County and trying to solve those issues. And so I really want to commend DHHS for that continued work. We often have a lot of items coming from DHHS that get skimmed over through our consent calendar, and I just really want to commend you guys for all your work that you guys do, do within our county, so thank you.
Thank you for that. Any other clarifications, comments from the board on the consent agenda? Supervisor Wilson?
Just a clarification, the typo that on D4, with relationship to, it's District 3, not District 4, that's all.
Okay, so we'll have that correction for the action report that comes out later. Okay, with that, we're going to go ahead and to public comment. As always, I start with Zoom. We still are doing hybrid meetings, which has absolutely helped increase our participation for those in the rural parts of the county in particular. And I've got two hands up at this time, the first one is 0116. You've got three minutes for public comment and star 6 to unmute. There you go, welcome.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Yes, the past year, it's lost coast populace. Yeah, just wanted to comment on the offshore wind thing. One thing I've been, you know, reading is that, like, it's going to require, like, constant federal funding to maintain it even once it's up and running. So I don't know if the county's done, like, a breakdown of actually how lucrative this is, does it even have enough muster to stand on its own two legs once all these millions or billions of dollars go into getting it up and running? I mean, is it just going to be something that, you know, we, the people, you know, across the country, since it's a national thing, are just having to prop up to keep it going? And it always seems, just kind of, you know, as far as maintenance and having something out in the ocean, that makes it way more difficult, not to mention the environmental part of, you know, the impact on the ocean, you know? Carpet bombing sea floor with sonar non-stop, who uses sonar? Whales and dolphins, punch thousands of holes, 60 feet wide to 150 feet deep, sorry scallops, shrimps, clams, mussels, crabs, et cetera, build cazzons of steel and concrete. You know, watertight structures for an anchored foundation, direct thousand-foot wind turbines with blades 180 feet long, spinning at 180 miles an hour. Turbine blades will slice up anything that happens to fly by, so all the birds, downdraft from the blades, it's kind of like a helicopter. But yeah, but a lot of impact for what are we going to get back besides having to prop it up? Is this just going to be like offshore Enron? I don't know, I hope people did the research, thank you.
Thank you, commenter. And next we have 1935, star 6 to unmute. There you go, welcome.
Thank you. Good morning, Supervisors. I am commenting on Consent Calendar, item number 17, the policy statement resolution encouraging and supporting the maximization of telework. My name is Leanne Green, and I'm a member of the Humboldt Workforce Coalition and bring our services to communities in Southern Humboldt and the Eagle River Valley. I live in Southern Humboldt and telework 100% of my work hours. This resolution supports the county's efforts to improve our workforce development in the rural areas outside of Arcata, Eureka, and Fortuna, communities that have been particularly hard-hit by our current economic woes. Many talented job seekers from the profoundly rural areas of our county are excluded from these local skilled living wage jobs due to the barriers that commuting presents. This resolution would positively impact the districts of Supervis- Supervisors Bone, Bushnell, and Madron. Across the nation during the pandemic, many employers pivoted to offer their employees telework opportunities and help to keep businesses running and their staff safe. Many reports showed equal, if not better, employee production rates as well as improved job satisfaction among those who telework. The county already has protections in place to ensure that teleworking employees complete their assigned tasks. The county stands to save significant dollars by maximizing telework opportunities. There would also be significant reductions in carbon emissions with teleworking. It would also allow job seekers to stay in their homes and not enter an extremely tight and expensive housing market. And, most importantly, maximizing telework opportunities engages qualified job seekers in all areas of the county at a time when these communities need the county's support more than ever. I ask our Supervisors to pass this resolution today, and the County Department has to take direction from their board to open up more county jobs to telework. Thank you very much for this opportunity to speak.
Thank you, commenter. And next we have 6447. Star six to unmute. There you go. Welcome.
Welcome. And thank you. And I hope my timing is right, but I'm actually, this is John Casali with Huckleberry Hill Farms. And I'm not sure if I'm calling about the Equity Trellis Program or not, but recently, in the last couple of years-
No, that's actually, John, that's actually on our agenda, coming up. And this is our consent agenda. And there is one Trellis item on there, but I think-
Okay, I'm sorry. That's all it does.
No worries, John. Stay tuned.
Always.
Okay, great. Thank you. And next we have 0326. Star six to unmute. There you go. Welcome.
Hi. My name is Charles Wilson. Last month, the county flew a strange political flag with American flag and the California Republic flag. This, to me, this indicates the county Board of Supervisors-
Charles, Charles, excuse me. That's not on our consent agenda? That, you could speak on that under public comment.
Oh, I'm sorry. I thought we were in non-consent.
No, we're getting there. We're getting there. Thank you, Charles.
Okay, I'm sorry.
No worries. All right. So that's it in the Zoom. So I'll go to the audience here today. If you would like to comment on our consent agenda, please come forward and let us know which item you're speaking on. And you will have three minutes. Welcome.
Ken Swarovski, star six. Charles, the reason, the reason we're not there yet is basically because the Supervisors should have pulled something off consent, but they didn't. We had a 15-minute, 20-minute conversation on an item regarding offshore wind, which is fine. That's part of what I want to comment on. First, I want to comment on addiction. In my opinion, the worst addiction you can have is lust for money and the greed and the lust for power. And unfortunately, that addiction is reflected quite a bit in our politicians, both locally and nationally and internationally. And that, that is a fatal flaw. So that, in my opinion, that has the biggest thing, the greed and everything, the whippets they're selling out there. People want to make money. All the negative things come basically from greed. I did want to comment on your offshore wind potential. I've always felt that Mother Nature eventually, anything that's taller or larger than what she creates, which would be her tallest tree, are negative karma lightning rods. And as far as I'm concerned, we don't have any here. We don't have any 12-story buildings. We don't have all kinds of things that would be, this would be the first. I don't think it's going to happen. I don't think the majority of the human race may be here in 10 years. Some people say three. If you look at what's happening, our seas are dying. The coral reefs are dying now as we speak with 100-degree temperatures. The animals, little critters that you would normally find in your windshield or your grill or your bumper, when I was a child, I used to have, younger person, used to have to wash the car, they're just not there anymore. The pollinators are going away. A lot of stuff's based upon GMO things that are roundup resistant, you know, to grow our food. Things aren't going well. And I had two, two grandfathers. One was a Southern Baptist minister. The other one was a Mennonite minister. And I think the Southern Baptist minister will be waving his hand and saying the end is near. Well, it could well be. I'm not going to, not going to say there's a very good chance of this offshore wind happening for so many reasons. And one of the biggest ones, I think it's an affront to Mother Nature. And I don't think she will allow it. I think she will destroy it. And I think anything else is, now look at what's happening around us. What are we doing out here regarding these projects and things? Our forests are burning. This is how we filter air. I just want to be here safe. I consider this a sacred place. I think the offshore wind is an insult. It has to do with greed.
30 seconds.
And I don't think it's something that will come to fruition. I think all of you are wasting your time on that particular project. And if you try listening to Mother Nature, she may tell you the same thing.
Thank you, commenter. And next, welcome.
Thank you. I'm Carrie Cesario, and I agree completely with Michelle about getting the nitrous oxide, the whippets, out of all the smoke shops. It is ruining our teens, our youth. Personally, I have a personal experience with it. That's what I'm in recovery for. There is always a co-occurring disorder, and these whippets are very powerful with such a little container. It just, it dumps dopamine out of your brain and forces it out so that you have this euphoria. But it also kills your brain cells. It attacks your central nervous system. It depletes your vitamin B that supports your nervous system. And it's just ruining our community. There's people dying. I have family members in paralysis that are paralyzed from it. I was very fortunate that I didn't experience any of that. I did experience a lot of detoxing and a lot of therapy afterwards getting off of it. But I would love to see them banned in only, like, only if you have a restaurant license and you're using them for whipped cream. Because, I mean, I'm thinking of my kids, and my kids' is kids, like, this, this stuff is, it's horrible. And I'm just very lucky that I didn't end up like some of my friends or family members that lost their lives or their ability to walk. Thank you.
Thank you for that. Yes, next. Welcome, Vernon.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, ladies and gentlemen of the board. I'm Adam CIO, County Council. My name is Vernon Price, and I'd like to speak on item number 12 and item number 13 also. I just want to say thank you. From lived experience, when I came into this community, I was unhoused, off medications. I am now housed on the Behavioral Health Board medications. I want to say thank you for building the relationships, tearing down or reducing the silos in our community, building a quality of life and a stronger community that we all live in. Thank you.
Thank you very much. All right, with that, we'll bring it back to the board for a motion.
I'll move consent with that correction of the one typo I mentioned.
One second.
So we have a motion by Supervisor Wilson and a second by Supervisor Arroyo. And let's do a roll call vote, please, unless we have our things up. I don't have mine up. I apologize. Yep. All right.
Okay, thank you. We'll start with you, Supervisor Arroyo.
Yes.
Supervisor Wilson.
Yep.
Supervisor Bushnell.
Yes.
Supervisor Bone.
Aye.
And Supervisor Madron.
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carries 5-0.
Great. Thank you very much for that. Okay, at this point, we will go to public comment on non-agenda items. And again, I will start out with Zoom. And we have one hand up there, and that is 0116. Welcome. There you go.
Hello. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Yes, Ash Teeter again here at the Lost Coast Populous. I don't know if you guys got it. I sent an email out to all of you last week and the Eureka City Council members about someone who was arrested for, you know, indecent exposure, just because they're, like, part of the Sisters of Perpetual Indulgence, and, you know, that group has been present at a lot of events, you know, recently with, you know, children presence. And, like, no one responded to the email that I sent. I thought it was kind of, kind of, you know, yeah, just not disheartening, I guess. But anyways, during a deeper dive into the arrested individual's online presence, revealed a disturbing pattern. When Ellis Gilmore, aka novice sister Be the Cock Him's Facebook page, there's an image featuring a pacifier, a lollipop, a popsicle, and an erect penis, which the caption read, "It's all right. You've been preparing for this your whole life." It's nothing short of alarming. Also, Gilmore's involvement in the Drag Queen Story Hour event through Sisters of Perpetual Indulgence further raises concerns about the content children are exposed to and the character of those presenting it. But yeah, all the, the presence of satanic imagery on his Facebook stuff was concerning. I'm claimed to be an atheist, but a lot of satanic reference there. In a fair world, the children might be protected, the protected class, not the grown men whose namesake of their organization promotes perpetual indulgence, constant sexual gratification. Like one of Gilmore's Facebook posts highlights is a free pass from acts which might be considered sinful, stating, "May pleasure be your god, lust your temple, and sex your sacrament." In a world that values morality and justice, the innocence of young children should always take precedence over the personal indulgence and ideologies of grown men. A just society would prioritize the protection of children regardless of the protected class and sexual identities and preferences-
30 seconds.
-to the grown men seeking their audience. It is our collective responsibility to advocate for media transparency and hold our elected officials accountable and protect the truly vulnerable class, the children of our community. So please take a look at the article we did on lostcoastpopulous.com for anyone who's interested in this, you know, disturbing story. Thank you.
Thank you. And next we have 0151. Star six to unmute. There you go. Welcome.
Hi, this is Dottie Russell. I, his star nine, it didn't work for, during the consent part. So just for the record, I hope other people are finding it more successful. I'm happy to be talking today. I wanted to talk about some of the costs that are incurred in Southern Humboldt for housing people, keeping them housed until such time as there might be some assistance. So there is some money coming to Southern Humboldt for helping people that are houseless or potentially going to be houseless. There also is some money going to the Arcata House, which does a great program. But it's not down in Southern Humboldt. For years and years and years, I've been working with the Humboldt Home and Housing Coalition, trying, working with churches, trying to figure out how to keep people housed. It's very important for us to address what money is coming down here and what money is up in Eureka, Arcata, and, and the perceived idea that the way that anybody gets to be housed or gets resources is that they have to go to Eureka and not have a dog. So I keep bringing this up because it's a constant problem. I've brought it up to everybody that I can think of, and I'm really not getting anywhere with this, and it really needs to be addressed. So of the people that have been supported by the local community that is not part of grants, that is not part of anything else, they have bought, they have taken the brunt of the expense of housing more than five people to the tune of, I have it written down here, to the tune of over $50,000. $50,000 by local people, local grants, I'm sorry, no grant money, but just expenses and money incurred by just people like ourselves and people that care and cherish human lives and what it means to them. And it needs to be, it needs to change. And I really need to get an answer. Usually when I speak, nobody calls me back. Nobody says anything. I call 211. They say-
30 seconds.
-I have to go up there. And it's just, it's mind-boggling. And at this point, there's still the issue about the Christian Science Church where somebody was living because he trespass, and we had to pay $3,000 to evict him. So where did he go? He's on the street still. That was the only place he had to live for 10 years. Somebody needs to call me. Somebody needs to care. Department of Human Services, I don't know, anybody with resources. I don't know. But just somebody-
Thank you, commenter. Sorry, that three minutes goes quick. 0326. Star six to unmute. There you go. Welcome.
Hi, this is Charles Wilson. My wife had a separate comment after I'm done. Anyway, last month, the county had a strange political flag underneath the, flying underneath the American flag and the California Republic flag. To me, this indicates county support for child mutilation and elimination of wounds' right to privacy and security. The metrox of equality, equity, and inclusivity, which are marvelous political words. This, this, it's, it's like in school when you, you're in a cafeteria line, and some guy comes along and says, "Cuts!" And he wants to get it, force his way in front of you, and you're supposed to give way. The alphabet people do not have the right over others just because they say they do. We've, we've been protesting various issues for the last four years on Fridays at the courthouse. I have a flag with a penis with a big slash across it, and then saying not to have the penises in women's showers. One guy said that I might offend some transgender, and he wouldn't argue. I don't argue. But the transgenders do not have, what they've done is much more offensive than what I have there. In the seventh grade, they have all this kind of stuff nowadays. After people, women have the right to not have a penis in the shower. And it's, when I was in the, when I volunteered for the Army, I was told by government that I had to shoot people that the government didn't like. It-
Charles, this is, this is crossing over into hate speech, and it's inappropriate and not allowed. So it sounds like it's time for your, your partner to go ahead and give her comments, and then we're going to move along. Thank you. Genevieve, did you want to comment?
Yeah, this is Genevieve, Genevieve Wilson. And with the aloha spirit, I want to sing a song and worry about Lahaina. Once upon a time, there was Lahaina, where we used to shop and laugh away. Around the banyan tree, where we think of the great fun we will do. Now Lahaina is gone. Global love is here. Everyone be aware of your surroundings. Continue to sing and dance for day and day. Live the life we choose. We fight and never lose. As long as we have Jehovah by our side, hallelujah. And by the way, beware, we have more COVID shots will be ordered by WHO. I just listened to that, that Pfizer donated $400 million to NIH for the vaccine. They are continuing to make the vaccine. Then we are, we are continuing to have it taken. So beware of it. And that's a conflict of interest. I talked to so many people, the Dr. Duncan, I believe in science. I believe in science, too. I talked to people that people die left and right. And now young people, they, our country, other Europe, they stopped giving to children. And we still push on the six-month to 12-month, 12-years-old to take the COVID shot. Too many vaccines. My kid grow up, only 11 vaccines, they survive, and they grow up, they have scholarships. And we want to destroy the, our next generation? Keep up with it. That's, that's wrong. Europe and England, they stopped giving the vaccine for the young people. And we still pushing. I don't know what the agenda is. But anyway, continue to, John Campbell, you too, you have a lot of information. And also, Samir Dah, D-H-A-N-D, he has a lot of good advice. But anyway, I talked to people, I have a nursing friend told me, stop the propaganda. But anyway, I talked to people, I have a nursing friend told me, "Stop the propaganda. You are political." I told them, "When I involve my, involve my health is not political, please." And they call me anti-vax. The vaccine will stop you from getting the disease. How many people take the COVID shot and get COVID? So beware of it. The time is coming. And then just, my point is, why are they making so many vaccines? So my time is up?
No, you got 25 seconds.
25 seconds. Well, anyway, live for our freedom. That's important. That's all I'm going to say. Turn in John Campbell YouTube, and thank you for my chance to talk. And aloha.
Thank you very much, commenter. And next we'll go to those here in the audience today for a public comment on non-agenda items. And just to be clear, when you cross over into hate speech against individuals or groups, that is simply not allowed. Yes, freedom of speech is a wonderful thing, but it requires respect of each other and not making personal attacks against individuals or groups that cross over into the hate speech category. So that is why I stopped the commenter. And so we'll go to those here in the audience today. Holly, please come forward and share with us your thoughts. Welcome, Holly.
Thank you for stopping that. I was so offended, I was ready to leave. I had, I was subjected to that same and even worse at the Eureka City Council last Tuesday night. And I've already written to Kim saying, "I did not expect the horrible stuff that was presented at the Eureka City Council." But again, that's not what I intended to talk about. What I intended to talk about was my daughter. She's still lost. We've got to do something about all of the illicit drugs. We have wonderful programs. I've known Vernon for years. I'm so glad he's housed now. He's a wonderful, supportive man. Now, I'm gonna, I don't have my hat on. It says I'm mad about drinking. But the double D, M-A-D-D, not the other one. When I was in school, we believed in the separation of church and state. Why have we lost that? I don't understand. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Anyone else here today who would like to comment, please come forward. Welcome.
For those in the room, you can appreciate what it takes for Holly to come here. And it's appreciated to have public comment on things. I, I do not support hate speech. The other day, I used a certain word, and some people took offense to that. I'm going to apologize for possibly in the context insulting donkeys and mules. I will avoid using those kinds of words, hopefully in the future. I think I can communicate without them, but at that time, I had to make a point. I felt I had to make a point. The biggest problem we had during that communication was an action taken, I believe, in not following your guidelines by Supervisor Bone. This is our time to speak. When he makes a comment to go over the top of what I've said, that's called chilling, and that's an attempt to make the people feel like they shouldn't be comfortable to speak. And that needs to stop. That, that is, that interferes with our First Amendment right, not like justifiably shutting down something. This is our turn to speak. We, we have to listen to you folks, sometimes pontificate, and I told Billy I wanted to press charges for felony yammering one time, and he kind of understood what I was talking about. You get every opportunity on every other topic to go over the top of anything we say, and we really don't have a chance to respond. So that's kind of a sacred time for us, and hopefully that will be a, I'm not asking at this time that Supervisor Bone be sanctioned and admonished, but if that does continue to happen, to violate our First Amendment rights, I feel that's appropriate. And if it can't, can't be done, then maybe he should leave the room during public comment on non-agenda items, if he can't risk or can't control himself at the dais. I do, I do feel that this is one of our most important things we have. Of course, Rex is up here laughing at me, which he has a right to do. I mean, he can do that. But I take it seriously. I think this is one, one of the few things that the people have, and we shouldn't be gaslighted. We shouldn't be talked over. We shouldn't be chilled. So hopefully, this, this will be brought forward with you folks. Maybe I'm misunderstanding your rules. If it's not a rule in there, it should be, and I strongly support you looking at that particular thing and not taking any action, just let everybody beware and just let everybody do like you just did, you know, maybe it was twice Supervisor Madron said, "This is not appropriate. You don't make comments," and yet he felt he had to make a comment. So that's my, that's my comment for the, my opportunity to speak, and I guess he could make a comment like he did last time, but whatever.
Thank you, commenter. And it looks like we have one more commenter. Welcome.
Good morning, Supervisors. Nadalyn Delap, Humboldt County Growers Alliance. I'm here today to flag an issue and a request that we made before your chambers back in June for a fiscal analysis of the Humboldt Cannabis Restriction Initiative. We are, I know you can't respond, this is a non-agenda item, but again, just flagging this, we are facing timelines. So in a few weeks, we know that the HCRi is going to be lettered, and we will begin referring to it as measure. And for voters and members of the public, as well as your department heads, we need to understand what are the costs of implementing this citizen initiative that's been brought forward. And so Department of Health and Human Services, our Sheriff's Department, Economic Development, as well as the Planning Department, and the CAO's office, as we're looking at our budgets for upcoming fiscal years, we really all need to understand what are going to be the fiscal costs for this initiative. And so, you know, it's, we're at the end of August right now. It takes weeks to get an item on the agenda, and then it's going to take several weeks, if not several months, to develop adequate analysis. And we need this time, time for the public in these departments to understand this in advance of the holiday season, because we all know that people start to check out around Thanksgiving all the way through to New Year's. And when we move into that time of year, we all need to really have understood these. So just putting this in your ear, that we need a fiscal analysis for the HCRi, and look forward to that as an agenda item in the coming weeks or months. Thank you.
Thank you, commenter. And seeing no other public comment, actually, I want to invite Kurt McCray, our Chief of the Humboldt Del Norte Battalion, up here to give us a, a brief update on the fires. I think we're all aware, there are lots of fires burning, and we are so grateful for CAL FIRE assistance with all of this. So welcome, Chief McCray.
Good morning, and thank you for the accommodation. Just to give you a brief update, good news on a short basis is the weather has moderated fire behavior in Humboldt, Del Norte, and Western Trinity Counties. So that's good news. The bad news is the totality of fires throughout our area, including our partners up in Del Norte County, is not good news. Numerous fires with little to no containment, as well as miles of open fire line. So just to give a brief history, in the CAL FIRE Humboldt Del Norte Unit and State Responsibility areas, we've had approximately 20 fires for 400 acres. All fires are contained. We're currently assisting Six Rivers National Forest and Redwood National Park to help them contain their fires. But again, the enormity of those fires in, in numbers and size is, is a daunting task for anyone. Additionally, the, the local fire departments cannot stress enough how much they've contributed to our success for CAL FIRE's efforts, as well as their contributions to the federal fires. As well, the, the services and help offered by Sheriff Hansel and Ryan Derby specifically have helped ensure that evacuation notices have been in place to the level required to provide public safety and enough notification, notification for our citizens to prepare for worst-case scenarios. And lastly, local tribes, they've been a significant contributor to, to the efforts here. They're probably the ones that are being most impacted, specifically in the Trinity and Klamath watersheds. So other than that, if there are any questions, I'm happy to answer them, but thank you for your time. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Chief McCray. Appreciate it. And please thank all of the workers out there on the front lines, helping us in our communities. Supervisor Bone, before you leave the podium.
Yeah, and I, I told you, Kurt, but I, I want to thank Public Works. There's quite a large fire camp taking place at Redwood Acres, and they're using both sides of the road. So as we did last time, there was a large fire camp. There will be a road closure on Harris in front of Redwood Acres. It's going to inconvenience some people, but we had, a couple of years ago, we had a couple firefighters almost hit, and it just, there's so much traffic. So they're going to implement a road closure on Harris Street there to, for the safety in regard of, of both the drivers and the firefighters. So that's kind of letting people know. Public Works has done this before, and as Chief McCray said, this may be a shorter version if the weather stays, stays cooperating. And the other factor is, we, we talk about Lahaina, we talk about everything else. We should probably say a little, for, for Del Norte County, I think something like 65% of their people are without power and have been without power. Crescent City, it's, it's a major thing. I don't know if anybody's noticed, the 30 generators drive by, I figured they were headed that way, but Del Norte's having a hell of a battle with 199 closed. We're going to find out the economic impacts. We're already seeing it some stores, the economic impact of 199 being closed that brings into mind what Last Chance could do to us. So as, as we move forward, I think it's a good time to, obviously, your people, I want to compliment, this hasn't always been true, but CAL FIRE and the Forest Service are working hand in hand, and I think the results are, are very evident of what you guys are doing. So I think that has a lot to do with your leadership. So thank you, sir.
Appreciate it. Appreciate the support. Thank you.
Supervisor Bushnell, before you leave.
Thank you. I just want to also echo thanks, and also thank you for the communication personally for our, for my district, as well as I know you communicated with Supervisor Bone and Madrone for our districts for our updates and, and the volunteers that have helped assist you. Your guys' departments, along with the Forest Service, have been great, and just want to say our thanks.
Great. Much appreciated. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And there is a community meeting in Oryc tonight at 6 o'clock at the Community Hall. For those who might be interested in what's going on with the Redwood National Park fires, the Glenn Fire, the Lost Fire, and the Devils Fire. And then there are other community meetings that are getting set up out in Willow Creek and Orleans over the next several days. So with that, Supervisor Wilson?
Just two things. One is I, I support and applaud Supervisor Bushnell for bringing up the whipits issue, and if there's anything I can do to assist, we were successful, Supervisor Bone and I, with relationship to pushing forward with the, with the flavored tobacco ordinance, and anything we can do to help to get that whipit done, we can, I think we can do, there's model ordinances out there. I think it's, it's not impossible. I think it's probably pretty, would be pretty easy. The other thing is, I want to applaud staff for really jumping on the hate speech that, you know, in terms of like, remind, because I have to tell you, sometimes when we're not prepared, at least for me, when I'm not prepared for that, and it's coming at, at us, I'm like, what is going on? Just thinking about it, and not thinking of the action we have to take. And I just appreciate you guys calling it out right there and letting, you know, like jolting us out of that, and we'll be much more vigilant. I just was not expecting it. So thank you so much, and we're all going to be better.
All right. Great. So moving forward with our agenda at this point, we're now on to items I1, Project Trellis Local Equity Program update regarding program modifications mandated by the Governor's Office of Economic Development. And I assume that Economic Director Scott Adair and others will present. Welcome.
Good morning, Board. Scott Adair, Director of Economic Development for the County of Humboldt. I'm joined today by Peggy Murphy, Economic Development Coordinator, and we're also supported in the back by Logan Ashworth, Economic Development Specialist. We're here today to seek guidance and direction from your board regarding a number of changes that the state is mandating in order to remain eligible as a community for state equity funding. Presently, we have an award in process from the state, which, if we are to expend that award and make payments out to qualified equity licensees, we will need to comply with the number of changes and requirements to eligibility requirements which have been required by the Governor's Office of Economic Development. It is important, I think, to note that these changes outlined in this item, even though there's a staff recommendation to approve them, so that we can expend these funds to assist the cannabis community, are not necessarily the recommendations of staff or the county or your board. Instead, they're required changes of GO-BIZ, the Governor's Office of Economic Development, who is administering the state equity program. We have been in contact with state representatives at a staff level, staff-to-staff conversation to talk about these changes and how they will impact our program. And we do come forward with this item with an understanding that it will have an adverse impact on several equity licensees. I would like to, I would like to also add that the changes to this program, which are coming forward as presented by the state, will also, for future equity rounds, require our county to come up with a one-for-one, dollar-for-dollar match for any future funding that we may apply for. As such, staff is also seeking direction on how to proceed with the Project Trellis Local Equity Program in the future for the next funding round, considering the modifications which will be needed to sustain and request that funding in light of the budget crisis that we presently face. We're available for any questions that you may have. Thank you.
Great. Thank you very much. Very concise. Appreciate that. Any questions, clarifications from the board on this item? Supervisor Bushnell?
Thank you, through the chair. So we, we obviously need to, you know, accept, and, and we have to go with the government, Governor's recommendations. Is there opportunity for us to make, to reply and say, you know, for instance, the one for Humboldt County where outside residents can receive these funds that don't live in Humboldt County, can we reply within, within that timeframe and still not hurt this program currently as it stands?
We can reply and still adhere to the new requirements as set forth by the state. I should note that we have had dialogue with the state on a staff-to-staff level. They're very aware of our concerns and how the new changes to the program are impacting rural communities in a much different way than they're impacting urban communities.
So would you, because there are several things that don't really work well for rural Humboldts and that don't work well for qualifications for our local farming community. And I understand that they are the state regulations, and so we're, we're, you know, we're dealt what we're dealt. And, and we don't want to not accept the funds, of course, because that's more detrimental. But would you need direction, of course, you need direction from this board to engage with a letter saying, "Hey, would, could we make some stipulations?" And we have until, what is the date? The 30th of September? Okay. And we could get a response.
And it requires your board action to approve the changes.
Okay. Okay. So I, I would like this board to consider that while I think it's very important that we do accept, that we allow for economic development to write a letter back, just questioning, you know, that this doesn't really seem like a one-size-fits-all for the rural county, especially for Humboldt, and see if we can get a response.
Okay. Great. Thank you. Any other clarifications, questions from the board? Supervisor Wilson?
Can we be specific about what it is that makes this not, or less advantageous for rural communities? Is it just geographic size that, I mean, you see what I'm saying? Like in a smaller geographic area with lots of jurisdictions that it may be applying this, someone could easily be living out that side of that jurisdiction and still be, is this?
There, there are a number of changes which make it difficult for rural communities to, to continue to administer and implement this equity program. What I'd like to do is turn it over to Peggy Murphy, out of the respect for all the great deal of work and due diligence that she's put into this matter, to try to negotiate better metrics with the state. Peggy, do you mind walking the board through what some of those changes are and the impacts?
Welcome, Peggy.
Thank you. Initially, when this program started, it was left to the jurisdictions to determine what best suited their qualified candidates. We brought that before your board multiple times to ensure that it was what your board intended for who would be receiving funds and services through this. After years of this, the Governor's Office of Business and Economic Development is now reviewing all jurisdictions' programs, and it looks like they are trying to create a one-size-fits-all. That's where we end up. That's where we end up falling into a category where it's more suited to urban jurisdictions than necessary rural. Um, our biggest concerns at this point are the removal of our residency requirement, which means that we could be funding someone that lives in another state or county or whatnot that is just a owner here. Uh, this was not intend, initially what seemed to be intended by your board for funding purposes. Uh, additionally, it has removed most of the language restricting that the businesses even be located in Humboldt County. We would like to get clarification on that, ensure we are funding Humboldt County businesses and Humboldt County residents. Um, finally, the biggest concern, well, not biggest, but one of the biggest, is, uh, we originally put a 20% ownership requirement on it. That was due to running micro grants through the Measure S funding initially and finding that that was the makeup we were seeing. We received hundreds of calls from people that were struggling to be able to fund legal, uh, entering the legal market, and so they had come together in groups, and we do see a lot of people that we funded that have four owners. We've even had calls from people that can only get 10% ownership because of the high cost of, of legalization. Um, and in the state's recommendations, they're requiring us to go up to 51% business ownership.
Okay. Supervisor Bushnell?
So, for instance, so a co-op type, uh, sir, um, deal would be, would not qualify?
Correct.
Under, under this new regulation?
Right. This new regulation would, um, be exclusionary to cooperative, uh, structures.
So, just to be clear, we really don't have any choice in regards to what the Governor's Offices are declaring as the, the new requirements. We either accept them or we don't accept them. Uh, but if we don't accept them, we can't really move forward with finalizing our current awards. So that seems critical. Uh, but it is also true that we can push back and send a letter, as was stated, in terms of the specifics, that just really don't work for our rural community, and we would like to see them consider modifications in the near future. So that's certainly direction we can give as a board. Supervisor Bushnell, clarification?
Yeah, so I, I think that, um, what I think our board should ask is for exceptions, and, and not, not necessarily modifications, because that takes a long time. I think if we could ask for exceptions to the 51% and ask for exceptions for the Humboldt, um, you know, we could get in a very sticky situation with, uh, outside, Humboldt outside residency, where that money could be very much gobbled up by people that don't live within Humboldt County. And so if they could, uh, allow for an exception, that our economic development, uh, team could make that conclusion themselves, that, that would allow for people to, for them to determine that people in Humboldt County qualify for that. It's only five, or it's a million two this time, next year, it's going to be 500,000. Um, instead, the monies are declining drastically. Um, I think that that would be something, you know, recognizing that they're trying, but that it just doesn't work for this, our rural community, and to allow for those exceptions, um, I think is a better choice of words, possibly.
Great. Thank you for that clarification. And yeah, we've been given three options in our, uh, staff report, uh, to consider, and of course, staff direction on, uh, exemptions that might be possible. Supervisor Bone?
That word keeps coming up, rural. You're in trouble if you're rural. I, uh, I appreciate this coming forward. I, you know, we, we collected, you know, the, the programs, like the co-ops, not supporting the co-ops. Co-ops are the only way the small farmer is going to survive, not an ill-guided, you know, initiative or anything else. Co-ops allow those people to centrally locate, and, and, and they're working in the outlying areas, and it does a few other things, carbon footprints, everything else. I mean, if you want to take it to the extreme. But they work for the small farmer, because it's a matter of scale. And you can see this in, in craft beer. Craft beers being, you know, in Bev and everything else, is buying the large craft beers and things like that. So, any way we can support, you know, this county has to realize that, till before we dropped the taxes, I think we brought in close to $58 million in local taxes, which was a great balancing act for our budget. But, we've also, between regulations, law enforcement, we've probably got 20%, probably less than 20% of the illegal grows that we had, because the market has changed. But the thing is, for the legal market, they're showing success this year. Is it great success? No. But you're seeing people say there is somewhere, we're going, we're finding a balance. And I still think we're at that point where we can help them find that balance, and when we dropped the taxes a couple of years ago, we said they're going to come back. Not at the scale they were, but they're, they will probably come back. Hark and dismay, I'm sorry to say that, because I'm not, but the thing is, but we have to be limited, because we're taxing, we're taxing items that is taxed completely different from every other thing in our county. So, as I think, as we move forward and we can support, support our sheriff and get the, because nothing helps more than stopping the illegal grows for the, for the, for the legal guys, and the mom and pops that everybody's worried about, and, um, even those large mega industrial grows of, no, that's San Bernardino, um, that we have. So I think as we move forward and what your department is doing, we, is we write these letters, we, we, we need to show our position and say, are you actually listening to the rural counties and, and what we're trying to do? So, thanks.
All right, thank you. And again, our focus today is pretty narrow. Uh, there's lots to discuss in regards to the cannabis industry, but we've got a specific item in front of us. Supervisor Wilson, and then Arroyo. Okay, Supervisor Arroyo?
Thank you. Uh, I, so I, I did hear that you're seeking direction. I know we're getting, getting, um, a little bit further away from the topic at hand today, but you are seeking direction for the letter to bring back, or if we, if we ask for a letter to come back, then you'd need some information about that. And I, I would concur with what my colleagues have said here, and, um, I, I do think it makes sense to really, um, really take the opportunity to articulate in that letter how the current, um, state rollout of legalization has been really impactful for, um, small cannabis operations, and to describe how the co-op model is really the future for a lot of the folks here in Humboldt County, and many people have embraced that. So, I, I just think, um, that, that may be something that they're not hearing from, you know, people as much about, so I, I just agree that a letter would be effective. Um, I don't know whether it's possible to change the administration of the program. It sounds like that would be more complex than asking for some kind of exception. Um, and I, you know, I guess I was going to ask staff, are you familiar with their process, including exceptions for any types of, um, community differences? Have you seen anything like that in the past?
The, the, um, thank you, Supervisor. The way that the legislation is worded around this particular program, the state agency administering the program, uh, and, and this program has changed hands at the state several times, uh, but whomever is administering the program is given a great deal of latitude and flexibility to have discretion over those types of decisions directly. Um, so, based on our interpretation of the legislation, they could, if they desired, uh, make those exceptions or grant those exceptions. I, I will add that, to our dismay, our conversations at a staff-to-staff level have not seemed to be that fruitful or productive. If your board were to consider a letter, uh, we would recommend that your board consider perhaps it being signed, uh, by your board chair or by our Madam CAO, uh, and also consider whether or not it wants to engage, um, county lobbyists and other consultants to help perhaps draft that letter or provide some sort of guidance, uh, to the, to the content of it.
Thank you. I, I think that is a, um, good approach, and I would also say, um, including, and, including our state-electeds who represent us as, um, CC'd, uh, and making it clear that, that they're included would be, uh, could be helpful.
Supervisor Wilson?
Yeah, I think focusing on the opportunities with relationship to the, uh, co-op model, I think is, is important, and sharing that viewpoint. I know that sometimes it takes a few iterations to get there, and I, and I do think that our local, uh, state legislators would be helpful in that. Um, just a, a quick question, from a administrative perspective, you've already reviewed and are ready to pay out, and, so what, if you accept the changes, does that change the review and the payout, or is that what that's doing? Is it modifying that?
Yeah, it would be a significant, uh, staff impact to have to go back to all of the current applicants, have them reapply through the new qualifications, reassess if they qualify, and then go through contracting process with them.
And do you, you, do you predict, just from knowing those applications, that there would be significant, uh, impacts in?
In the current state of the applications, there will be a significant impact.
And so one of our options on here was to not change, and, but then, we, but then we would end up spending money which may not be reimbursed? Is that, is that what would happen?
If we did not change, I believe we would not be able to accept the 1.2 million.
We just wouldn't even be able to accept it. But this is without strings, this current one? I mean, not strings, it's without a match?
Correct. The match comes into effect for the next, uh, great round.
And administering this, do we get anything for administering this, or are we paying out of pocket on administration?
We get a small, uh, fee for administering it. The, uh, we are presently being audited for all equity payments that have gone out. We're not the only community, other communities are being audited. Uh, so while we're enacting and implementing these changes, we're also going through a state audit on all equity payments that have been made to all equity applicants in the community. So it's, it's been somewhat of a strain on staff resources.
Do you feel like the fee has more, has, has, are we, you see what I'm saying? Is that fee, uh, reimbursing our staff time on this, do you think, adequately?
No.
So, we have a financial impact administering this?
Absolutely.
Of, do we have any understanding of the scope of our, our impact, of our financial impact of administering this 1.5 million?
We've been tracking that, and we did not prepare that or bring it today, but it is something that we do report on.
Okay. I mean, because 1.5 million can sound like a lot, until then, when you, but you could eat up a lot of money administering stuff like this, and I have some concerns. And then, if the next round's 500,000, I would really want to know what our administrative costs are associated with that, um, before we personally, I mean, I'm, before we talk about, uh, especially when it includes a match, a $500,000 match. So in order for us to get that $500,000, we're going to put up $500,000 and then administer it. Is that how I see that, or am I?
To clarify on that, it's a match of one-to-one above 500,000.
A match of one-to-one above 500,000? Okay. So, is there a limit then above that, in terms of like, because we only got 1.5 million this time, and we know that that pool's dropping?
Correct. The state is limited to 15 million, and the amount of applicants at the state level is increasing each year.
Okay, I appreciate that. Um, and then, as Supervisor Bone said, we've talked in the past about, you know, when we, we put a pause on the tax, uh, which was at 15%, so 15 cents per square foot, I think is more or less, I mean, just kind of, not like, so from, from my perspective, if we're talking about administering these things, and then also potential matches, within our budget, I, I do think we may want to consider bringing back that conversation earlier than what we had anticipated, um, because I would feel a lot more comfortable if we have, we have some income being generated to administer these programs, as well as the law enforcement and other pieces of this, um, in order to support that. So that's where I'm at on the second half of that discussion so far, without comment from public already, so. Changed my mind, all right.
Okay.
Okay. Seems like a good time to go to the public. One final comment from Supervisor Bushnell?
Um, more of a comment and a question. So, um, I think because there's not that many, that, there's not much funding, people are being, they're not applying, and the, um, people are feeling, you know, like, oh, why bother? And so, there's two parts to, um, getting equity certified is something that you can do regardless, and you don't have to receive funding. Is that correct?
That is correct.
And so part of being equity certified for the state is that if you're not equity certified, then you also are not going to receive a waiver to, um, for your state license. So, the message that I would like to say is that regardless if you think that you're going to qualify for an equity grant through Project Trellis for Humboldt County, if you need to get your equity cer- certification to qualify for an, uh, an equity waiver, or a waiver for your state license, please do that, because if you then want to apply to get that waiver for your state license through DCC, you're not going to be eligible if you haven't done that work. And, um, and you don't have to take the funding. If you don't qualify for the funding, you still get your equity certificate, and maybe Peggy can elaborate on that, but it is creating a little bit of a problem right now.
So, we started receiving calls recently from cultivators looking to get their equity, uh, waiver from DCC. It is news to us from those phone calls that it is now put on local jurisdictions to equity qualify, uh, people to receive that waiver. The concern at the staff level is that our funding is through the Governor's Office of Business and Economic Development, not through the DCC, and so I think we also need a clarifying component from either the state and/or your board as to whether or not we're to, at a staff level, be using administrative time to equity-qualified participants for the DCC fee waiver.
And so my question then would also be, in that letter, we need to address that. Like, um, are we to do this work? And if we are to do this work, then we need to be compensated for it, so that we can add a staff person, um, if they expect us to do it, and they disqualified someone already because we didn't do that work. So we do need clarification.
Supervisor Bone?
And I think for future reference, because I understand the concerns and everything else, but I know how much time we, you guys spend trying to find industry and businesses, and this will bring 2,000 jobs, this will bring 3,000 jobs. What I'd like to know is at the height, and then where we're at now, what does the legal cannabis industry employ in Humboldt County? Because it's an industry we have here, I think, which is a big part of this, and what we're trying to do is supplement that. And we, we, we throw a lot of dollars at new jobs, which I think is the most important thing, is we have to kind of reinvent ourselves, much like we did with the timber industry, trying to find different ways for timber, the byproducts and things like that. So, somewhere in there, you could work with one of the local industries and actually find out how many people, you know, at one time it was 10% of the county, they said, was involved in, and I know that's no longer, but I, I still think it's a viable workforce that creates people that can pay for housing, you know, can do a lot of this stuff. So I, I, it just helps to, to frame, to frame what we're talking about, because I think sometimes people just think we're helping people that don't need help. And I think every industry hits their downturns, and we've been known to help those industries when they hit those downturns.
All right, thank you for that. And at this point, we're going to go to public comment on this item. And again, it's a, a narrow focus on these Trellis equity grants, uh, as well as, we've got three options and some discussion about asking for some exemptions as well. So, uh, we've got 6447 with your hand up, and star six to unmute. There you go, welcome.
Yeah, thank you, Steve, and, um, and this is John Cassaly with the Huckleberry Hill Farms, and, uh, Michelle and Peggy, I think, just covered basically kind of what I was going to share with all of you, um, currently my experience with, um, hoping to get, uh, my license, uh, fee waived, uh, because of my prior conviction, um, was denied, um, because I'm not qualified or not, um, what does it say? It says currently fee waiver funding for applications, not enrolled in the local jurisdictions, equity program are exhausted. So the state's now currently out of money. The license that I was hoping to get waived, um, doesn't come up for renewal for another month, and the state doesn't allow me to renew that until 60 days prior to that license expiration date. So, whereas, a large percentage of the state, um, got that benefit because their license renewal date was earlier on in the year. Now, I'm kind of feel like I'm getting a little bit punished because my license date was re, is going to be, needed to be renewed next month, and now I'm not available to get that done, um, only, I think, because the state's out of money, and I'm not, um, I'm not on your, uh, enrolled in local jurisdiction, um, equity program, because for some reason I didn't think I qualified, or whatever the reason for. Um, it should be just a real simple pro, uh, process, I would imagine, to look at my conviction and put a check in a box, and then I would, would save $5,000. And I, I'm, I'm hearing through the gr- And I'm hearing through the grapevine that there's quite a few other people in this position. And it's really getting pretty dicey. I know Bone said that there's an upturn, and yeah, there is, but it's getting a lot harder for a lot of us small farmers. And where I thought last year a lot of us would fall out, it's really this year that you're going to see a lot more farmers fall out. And that's, you know, very unfortunate for not only the county, but for all of us community members and family. And so whatever you can do, obviously, I've signed up already. They gave me within 10 days to come up with the answer or be part of my local equity program, and that's not going to happen. So I've already given that. But if we can help somebody else down the road, that would be amazing. Appreciate everything you do. And hats off to Peggy Murphy. Emailed her within five minutes. She called me, kind of discussed the different programs, why it wasn't going to be possible, and just really appreciate that kind of customer service really made me feel good. So thank you very much.
Thank you, commenter. And next, we have 0116. Star six to unmute. There you go. Welcome.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Yes, Ash Teeter here. Yeah, previously during this conversation, one of the board members managed, mentioned the, you know, the tax framework that's based on, you know, square feet of a grow. And I think that's the real issue that people are having, is they think taxes off something that's fixed when the market isn't fixed. So I mean, maybe taxes should be based on how much, you know, profit people actually make instead of the size of the grow. I can still limit the size of the grow, but base the tax off, you know, how many eggs actually hatch instead of how, you know, how big the chicken coop is. But anyways, that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. 3053. Star six to unmute. There you go. Welcome.
Good morning. Thomas Mulder here, speaking as myself. I just want to make sure you can hear me, Chair.
Yes, we can.
I apologize if I seem a little rattled, but Supervisor Wilson, your comments earlier, I'm still sick to my stomach that I want to throw up. You received 50 million dollars in taxes from industry directly, let alone the indirect cost, and you want to talk about, I don't know if I can contribute to overhead that it takes to run this Trellis program? Why don't you just say, I want to ban all cannabis as it is right now? Because that's what your statement just said. That aside, think about the trickle-down economics of helping this industry. Many cultivators are putting hundreds of thousands of dollars into local workforces who in turn live in this community, buy groceries in this community, and supply in this community. So I feel that you as a county should do whatever you can to make it so anyone who's lived in this county for ten, in the last 10 years, qualify because they've been affected. Whether it's the shortage of housing because houses are used as growhouses or workforce, you know, the wages, people getting paid too much for jobs sometimes, and you have to pay people more and more, that's slowed down now. Everyone's been affected in good and bad ways. So to like sit there and be like, oh, we aren't getting our money this year? It's disgusting. Like, I'm just, that hurts my heart. The other four of you, do whatever you can to make sure you can support this industry that has held this county up and done a lot, done a lot. Sorry to be emotional, but sometimes I get really sick to my stomach when people speak lies. Thank you for the opportunity to speak.
Thank you, commenter. And next, we have 7429. Star six to unmute. There you go. Welcome.
Good morning. This is Robi Ternorio, and I'm calling in because I want to support Supervisor Arroyo's inclination to have some wording in there that supports the co-op model. In fact, Humboldt County was one of the first, first co-ops formed, had, was home of one of the first co-ops formed in the state. And it's really, it would be a shame to not be able to have that because I think the small farmers really need that option here. So I appreciate that being part of me commenting that you send back to the state. Thank you.
Thank you. And next, we have 6478. Star six to unmute. 6478, this is your turn at the mic. Star six to unmute. For folks in, there you go. Welcome.
Hello?
Yes, welcome.
I'm Victoria Chantel, and my family and I run a small cannabis cultivation, a thousand square feet down here in Southern Humboldt. And I would just like to say I support the cooperative model, and that I think it's going to be the lifeblood of our county, and without it, we're going to be, see great influx of corporate, not cooperative. And that's where I stand, and I hope that the Trellis grants get funded for the small farmers. Thank you very much.
Thank you, commenter. And that is that in the Zoom. So we'll go to those here in the audience today. Please come forward, and you've got three minutes. Welcome.
Good morning, Supervisors. Ross Gordon with Humboldt County Growers Alliance. Want to start just by thanking all of you, by really thanking staff for all of your incredibly hard work on the equity program since 2019 when it first rolled out. I know there's a lot of local jurisdictions that have not been able to successfully stand up an equity program. They've had bureaucratic challenges, they haven't been able to get the money out. Humboldt County really is exceptional in having been able to distribute over $9 million to this point of state equity funds. And I know how hard staff has worked to make that happen, and so really want to show that appreciation. And also want to appreciate the direction of the conversation today to really continue to support the equity program and continue to work with the state to make sure that it's as effective as possible, and we're working with the state to resolve challenges that we're having in terms of these additional conditions that are being applied. So as HCGA, we really support option number one in the staff report to make these eligibility changes now and distribute these funds. And in part, one reason we think that's so important is that it gives us standing to continue to work with the state to improve program criteria, to push back on the things that are problematic. Really want to particularly support what John Cassaly mentioned, this specific aspect about being able to qualify as equity even if you're not applying for grant funds, really, really important. A single 10,000 square foot small outdoor license is paying about $5,000 annually just in state licensing fees. It's really, really significant. And so that part of the program, anything we can do as a county to facilitate those local equity verifications to make sure people qualify for that state program, I think from our perspective should be a really high priority. Finally, just wanted to say a few words to give context for the longer-term potentials and opportunities in this program. There's a lot of money on the table right now. There's this 1.2 million. I think we would expect this program to continue basically in perpetuity in terms of the availability of these grant funds from the state. Right now, grant funds are being allocated every year through the legislature, through the budget, until they're expended. There is a bill right now in the legislature, though, AB 1565, that would allocate $15 million annually directly out of state cannabis tax funds to equity programs, and that would be in perpetuity. So I think that's an opportunity which is going to continue to be available. We may even see with federal legalization, some equity elements of any federal law that legalizes cannabis. And so any investment that the county is making right now to keep this program moving forward, continue to improve it, continue to be a stakeholder, working with the state to make sure it's effective as possible, is going to pay really long-term dividends for the county and for equity operators. Thank you.
Great. Thank you. And next, welcome.
All right. Thank you, Supervisors. Kelly Flores with Margar Advisors. We really appreciate the hard work that's been done by this Trellis team in supporting so many cannabis businesses through the hard times. It's been an honor and a privilege really working with Logan and Peggy. They've done a tremendous job. We've actually assisted many of the same folks in receiving the equity state fee waivers that Supervisor Bushnell mentioned. And in that process, the issues raised in the staff report are issues that we've already experienced, especially when attempting to establish proof of residency. Now, while it may seem easy to want to conform to a state program for consistency and of course, the additional funding, please be aware that the state has shown an ongoing bias against rural farmers in their regulations and requirements time and time again. The most obvious demonstration of this is in the state's refusal to allow the use of P.O. box addresses for proof of residency, even when they appear on government IDs, vehicle registrations, and other official documents. We ask that if the board chooses to participate in the state program that you demand from the DCC and the governor, that accommodations be made to enable equal consideration for rural farmers in processing their equity applications. This includes allowing post office boxes or APNs on documents and a broader set of allowable documents to be submitted, including property tax bills, voter registrations, vehicle registrations, vehicle titles, school records, and any other documents which are issued by a local, state, or federal agency. And to be clear, speaking of latitude, this is entirely within the power of the Governor's Office to allow. Section 26244E of the State's Cannabis Equity Act allows the Governor's Office of Business and Economic Development to quote, "review, adopt, amend, and repeal guidelines to implement uniform standards, criteria, requirements," and is exempted from the rulemaking provisions of the Administrative Procedures Act. In other words, they have the power to make this change entirely on their own. Now, while we disagree with the state's removal of minority classes such as women and LGBTQ+ business owners, literally the social aspect of social equity from their qualifications, if the county must concede to the state's limitations, we ask that it be done in a matter that makes it truly equitable for our own community. Now, in addition, as was raised, we ask that the registration for local equity applicants continue to be supported regardless of funding, because it is this enrollment in a local program that qualifies individuals for the additional state fee waivers, regardless of whether they've received an award or not. So we ask that this enrollment be integrated as an ongoing process, and if necessary, that applicants be billed for the county's time as it would allow them to be eligible for this outside funding. Please consider these critical concerns in your deliberations. Thank you.
Thank you. Next. Welcome.
Good morning. Craig Johnson, Southern Humboldt resident. And my wife and I have received equity funds through the program, and have been very helpful for us to form co-op or get that in motion and do some other things, road improvements, et cetera, and even pay some of our back Measure S taxes. So we appreciate the program, and we feel the program should move forward and, you know, try to keep working with the state. Some of the problems are they're trying to erase some of our lived experiences. Those lived experiences are 1997, the first time, I believe, the county used Stabo, and we had to run for our lives as a man was hanging from a helicopter over our home. And we left, and our cabin was tossed, and our small grow at that time was taken along with my four-wheeler, which was back then a farmer's tractor. Then I learned in 2003 not to run, and that's when Sergeant Gary Cooper came to my gate, and I had to keep him from shooting my dog because he felt threatened. And I had to use my words and my personal body to keep him from entering my personal curtilage and wanting to enter my 20-by-20 medical greenhouse that had 12 plants in it. So these experiences, you can hear the tremble in my voice because these are real and these are lived. And equity is for life. You don't need to look at someone's taxes every year. You don't need to inquire about their status every single year. You have Johnny Cassaly, who spent 10 years in prison, and he can't get a free license? Come on. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, that would appear to be, well, one more commenter. Welcome.
So it's no doubt, those of us who track what the governor's up to and other politicians are up to, we're not going to get equity here. I mean, he has their people, and I understand he's pretty well out of the weed business. He's in other nefarious things going on and whatnot that he's doing, which seems to be, like I said, greed and politicians seem to go together. And I know we did have one of our, the people who have the most political snooze are the ones who are going to benefit from any of these things. The rural people are not going to get that particular money. One of our, I can't remember, Assemblyman or Senators, his significant other had a dispensary down south. And so, of course, the legislation that went through benefited those kind of people, those kind of connections, rather than those of us up here. I cannot see continuing funding. I know it'd be great if it was. I talked to people 15 years ago. My friend was Lonnie Bishop, and he was one of the first guys in high times, the only guy who didn't put his name in there, didn't get busted. I said, Lonnie, you don't need to put together your groups and brand it. That was 15 years ago or more. And Lonnie's passed since then, so he's no longer around. More power to him. I think they should work on their co-ops because I think that is the potential, it always was, maybe a little bit late, but hopefully some of the people can salvage what they have here through the branding and the co-ops. Strongly support you doing whatever you can. On the other hand, if you're going to rely upon other funds being taken from a general fund to make this other 500,000 for matching or the more than 500,000, you may wish to put a caveat on there that you only do that with funds or funds do other things necessary out of the people paying, what, $14 million worth of Measure S outstanding tax? And so that makes us revenue neutral. Or if the people are willing to pay the additional amount to get their state licenses, I stay revenue neutral. We pretty well have to do that on everything we're doing out there. But I think you're going to find it hard-pressed to pull general funds things out to go forward with this unless you're doing it equally across the board for all of the job creation that you have opportunity to speak.
Thank you. Okay, with that, Holly, are you, no. Yes. Welcome, Holly.
Thank you. When I read the article in the Eureka Time Standard this morning, I thought, oh, shoot. I was planning to stay home and wash dishes and clean house, and now I got to come down here. And I waited until a reasonable time and called a friend who's an actual scientist to say, would you please read this and then explain to me what's happening here? And he did. It took him about a half hour to call me back, and he said, Holly, I get it. You don't know me well, but what I want you to say on my behalf is, this is an illegal substance federally. There's more and more research being done to show the adverse effects of taking anything that is not a legal prescription to cure whatever your problem is. For God's sake, let's not throw more good money after bad. People are dying out there, dying. And we fulminate about who should get money for an illegal substances. What in the world is wrong?
Thank you. Okay, and it looks like that's the end of our public comments, so we'll bring it back to the board. We do have a time set in five minutes. We're not going to make it, I know, but I would like for the board to try and be concise and not repeat itself and see if we can get to the point of making a decision and give some direction. Supervisor Bushnell?
Thank you. Actually, we'll try to make a motion, and probably we'll need some help a little bit. But I would like to make a motion for staff recommendations for approve and direct staff to modify the Humboldt County Local Equity Program Manual B2.1, Attachment 1. And I'm going to ask Scott, so that would be the recommendation number one. And I'm going to ask Scott, do you need the authorization for the county administrative officer to execute the 2022 grant? You need that as well. Yeah, so then the recommendation of number two. And then number three would be to provide direction, right? That would be the additional portion. So providing the letter, and I think Supervisor Arroyo, what she said about involving possibly our some outside people, I don't know that anybody on this board knows exactly as much as Peggy does of the difficulties with the program as you do. And so I would like to authorize that Peggy work with Sean, which would be also to work with, to come up with a letter to send to the governor if that is what, if the board feels that's appropriate.
Okay, we have a motion, which is basically to adopt option number one, along with the production of a direction to staff to produce a letter.
Well, option number one and two.
Well, I think what you added, number two, is actually in number one as well, execute the 2022 award. So that's all part of number one, as I understand it, just to be clear. So that's all part of number one, as I understand it, just to be clear. You're supporting option one along with the direction to staff for a letter to include the co-ops and the other stuff that's been discussed here. So is there a second for that?
Oh, second, I have a clarifying question, but I think Supervisor Wilson does too. I'll just, so we'll, the letter will come back to us before we send it, is that correct?
Yeah, so I think, I think we're a little short on time because we need to get it out, but yes, I think that if you come back on consent for us to review, yeah, come back on consent for us to review.
And the letter, so my understanding of what we were talking about with the letter was for the next round. I mean, it sounds like we have fairly few choices when it comes to getting the money out the door for this round. I would also be open to that letter, including a request that there be additional funds to rework the program since there has been a cost associated with that, since staff did all the work to identify and work with the community to identify initial applicants and then now that the situation has changed, if there were a way to include that in the letter as well, compensation for the additional administrative burden, I'd be supportive of that in line with Supervisor Wilson's comments.
So I think that Peggy, that's adding a lot to that motion. I think my direction to, Peggy's aware of that in my conversations with Peggy, some of the difficulty is that there's not enough staff time, and so I know that she will include that in that because that is a lot of the difficulties.
Yes.
And so I think, so my motion is, I want to clarify those. Item two, does it need to be included? It's not, it's different than item one, is that correct?
Option one, option two.
Option one, option two.
The only difference is seeking funding in the future.
Correct. I believe that your board is choosing option one.
Okay, so I make a motion for option one and then to, so I'm starting over, and then to have, also to direct Peggy to work with Sean and work with our, I lost the word, but people to create a letter to send to the governor.
And to clarify on that, you're authorizing the CAO to execute that letter.
Yeah, I think Sean works for you, right? So that would be CAO.
Okay, so I think we still have the same motion, it's just been clarified.
Yeah.
And does the second still hold?
Yes, I do still need clarification. I'm willing to second, but I need the clarification on whether, so the timeline for the new application round is such that we would need to send this letter before we have another meeting, is that correct?
No.
It's the 30th, September 30th is the deadline.
September 30th. So we could have the letter come back on consent for us to review because I think there are a lot of community members who obviously express a lot of interest in the provisions of this, who might like to weigh in on.
Okay, I think I'm seeing agreement up here as far as bringing it back on consent ASAP.
Just to clarify, the September 30th deadline is for us to execute the agreement to accept these funds with the new conditions.
Gotcha.
So we can bring the letter back, but it'll, given the 21-day lead time to do that, plus the time to draft the letter, we'll likely be able to get it to them a week in advance of that, that day.
Okay.
All righty, good. So we have a motion and a second.
Works for me.
Supervisor Wilson?
My question is really about the second half, about what's his relationship for the apply for funding for fall of 2023. When does that application happen?
It's moved every year. Last year, it was in, it started in December, then moved to November, I believe they're aiming for October this year.
And wouldn't, within that application, would we then understand the parameters of, we would have the new parameters? And from my perspective, I kind of want to see what falls out of who qualifies in this round before I feel comfortable applying for this money again personally. Because if it comes back to us that half the money left the community and went to other places, I'm not that excited about spending our time and effort to go through this all over again with the, with the potential of actually even having match funds associated with it. So I really, I would like that part to come back to us after we understand what this happens here. That's just, that's me. So if the motion is as it is right now, it will not, I will be voting no on that only because I really want to see what comes out of the current situation before approving, moving forward with a 2023 application. That's me.
Supervisor Bushnell?
Can I ask you a clarifying question around what Supervisor Wilson said? Does, so if, does the farm have to be in Humboldt County but the person can live outside of Humboldt County?
Based on the updated qualifications, that's what we understand. They removed our residency requirement.
But the farm still has to be in Humboldt County?
They did remove our language stating Humboldt County business. However, the definitions at the state level require jurisdiction permit, so I think it would still come back to the farm being in Humboldt County.
So then, so then Mendocino Farm is not going to be getting equity monies from Humboldt County? So then Humboldt County is still benefiting? So I, Supervisor Wilson, do you understand that?
Yeah, I do understand it and it's, my concern still stands.
Okay, thank you.
So it just seemed timely to be able to get a report. Is that something we can schedule?
We can certainly bring a report back, and since what you're directing us to do is to draft a letter that comes back to you for review, rather than perhaps working out the details of the letter here, I think that we've got quite a bit of direction and guidance. We can put that into the letter, work with any outside lobbyist or expert and the CAO's office and Deputy Sean Quincy to bring that in a draft form back to you. And then I think we could have, if the letter's not sufficient, at that point, we could have more conversation around how you might want to see that letter added or changed. I would also recommend that based on timing, since we don't know yet when that next grant round is going to be released, that we, you defer to staff as to the best timing to bring that report back in advance of when that grant opportunity may be made available.
Okay.
And we can certainly bring a report back on the efficacy of this grant round as to where the funds are going and how the changes have impacted the distribution of those funds.
Okay, great. So a report would come back in a timely way in regards to moving forward with the next program?
Correct.
Through the chair, if I may.
Yes, please.
I do have concerns about the timeframe of that. If we're discussing 9:30 contracting date for a 1.2 million, having to revamp the program, reopen it for application, review applications, and start contracting, and a potential for an October, November application period, it's unreasonable that we'll actually have that information.
Okay, ASAP, basically, that fits in the schedule, given the workloads and the staffing. Okay, Supervisor Bone?
And I know, talking with Sarah Duquette from RCRC, she will help in any way she can on the state level and especially the rural counties because as we move forward, we're going to find out big growers, these hundred acre growers and these big outfits do not want co-ops because they compete with them, so they can get rid of their competition who Humboldt gets its product from. If, if we have a timeframe issue, if you run across a timeframe issue working with RCRC and the Humboldt County Growers Association, because that's where a lot of this input's going to be coming from, I feel perfectly comfortable with my colleagues, the first and the second, are with a letter coming forward and they can, I'm sure Supervisor Arroyo will tell you her concerns. I mean, can only talk to one other person and everything. But if a timeframe comes up, because, do we have a meeting after Labor Day? Okay, so what I'm, what I'm trying to say is if there's time restrictions and things like that, I have full faith in my colleagues approving the letter. I do not have full faith in the governor and the powers to be doing anything with it, seriously. So that's why I'm not as concerned. I wished I was a little more, you know, heartfelt on that. But as we move forward, I would allow, I would support my two colleagues being able to okay the letter if time becomes an issue, if you find out, hey, we got to get this thing through. Because the issue being by the time it comes back and forth, back and forth, they're going to have a freight day. You got to understand, us getting an agenda out has to be vetted between all our department heads. This is all going to take time. And then it sits on, you know, I've been here on Friday afternoons, and then it sits on somebody's desk for quite a while. So if we get it in there very late, it isn't going to be worth the paper it's written on. So I think time is of the essence.
As was stated, staff are going to do everything they can to move things forward as quickly as possible, but our motion requires a whole lot of extra work to go back and review things and other stuff. So my assumption is all these things will be brought to us as soon as possible, given the workloads and staffing and the rest of it. So I'm going to go back to our colleagues and see if we can wrap this discussion up. Supervisor Wilson had tagged me, and then Supervisor Arroyo.
I appreciate what Supervisor Bone is saying, and I do think for the purposes of expediting this, I do think that the board giving authorization to Supervisor Bushnell and Arroyo to review this, to get it out the door, I'm totally, I would be very happy with that and it's fine, we can do that. I want to go back to a bit of the equity part with relationship to this. I, like Michelle, grew up in Southern Humboldt in the 80s, and I can tell you, we saw and experienced militarization and it was not just in 1997, was not the first time helicopters came through Humboldt County. All through the 80s, we had National Guard and all that stuff. And so we, you know, I was there, present, and still accounted for, and I went to school with John, and we, we're, we get it. I mean, we were there. There was, there was a lot of impacts associated with that for sure within the community. I want to emphasize though, still, that the reason that there was the ability to generate income from cannabis was prohibition. And so that is what kept the prices high enough to like, for people to buy land and do all the things that were happening out there. The brunt of that impact was in urban landscapes with, you know, with our, you know, BIPOC people. I mean, and just putting it out there, and that is really emphasis of what the state was trying to, 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 to address with relationship to these impacts of, of prohibition of cannabis. That doesn't say that we didn't have big impacts and we don't have our own communal PTSD around that, but we have to remember where the brunt of that, of that, of that episode really came down and what we're really trying to deal with. And we are trying to deal with it here too, but I just don't, sometimes I feel like we, feel like it's all just here, and it's not just here. It was, and, and we're, and we are different in that way. So I just wanted to put that out there. I do feel like, I like the intent of what this, you know, what we're trying to get at here is the county. I do think that the state has different alliances and, and programmatic priorities than we do necessarily. We're going to have a hard time getting that place. I still feel like, from my perspective, I really want to see the impact of what happens that report before I'm supportive of moving forward with applications for 2023. That's me. So I am supportive of the change to be made to get out the door what we can in the current context. I think that's okay. So if we move forward the way it is, just want everyone to understand where my nay vote comes from, and that's okay. We're, I mean, we can move from there. Thanks.
Okay, and I believe Supervisor Bushnell wants to add something to the motion about her and Supervisor Arroyo being the reviewers of the letter, if I understood that suggestion correctly. That would be a modification to the motion. Supervisor Arroyo?
I think I might be next in the queue. I just want to clarify that, so the motion involved item one, which is approving and directing staff to adopt this new manual that's about eligibility requirements that's consistent with the governor's office requirements and authorize the CAO to execute the 2022 contract. So those are the two parts that we talked about in the motion. Then we added an additional item that's not in our staff recommendations about writing a letter saying, hey, here's why this program isn't good the way that you've retooled it for rural communities. And it sounds like, you know, we may be going in the direction of you and I reviewing the letter, which is great. And, and then item three was not really spoken to in the motion. We're talking around it, but it's about whether we apply for this again in the fall, and I imagine that staff would probably need some kind of authorization from the board to apply again, and we don't know the timing of that. So I'm not sure if that's, if that's the case, that there would need to be board authorization to apply. Either way, it doesn't sound like we'd have all the information we would ideally want to have to know whether we want to reapply in time, but that's where it stands. So sometime in the fall, we'll have to do this again. But the letter is supposed to inform that process of the future, not the current process, which we're kind of stuck with what we're stuck with. So that's my understanding of what we're voting on right now. We're not voting on item three. We are voting on one and two and 2.5, which was the letter that we spoke about.
So you're correct, there are three parts to option one, but what is the motion is to approve option one in its entirety, and that includes continue to apply for funding in the fall. Now, whether or not we apply for more than $500,000, triggering the one-to-one match and that kind of stuff, that's always optional, but as the motion stands right now, it does include applying for the funding. That's the way the motion was phrased, option one. There's three parts to it.
There's two one-twos and threes. So on page one, there's recommendations one, two, and three, and then there's option one, option two, and option three.
And we're talking about option one, which includes three parts, modify the program, execute the 2022 award, and continue to apply for funding in 2023. That's the motion along with the direction of staff for the letter, and if modified, the motion could include Supervisors Arroyo and Bushnell in reviewing that letter so that it can be done promptly and sent out. That's my understanding of the motion, but we would need to amend the motion to include the two of you.
Yes, so I'm going to, I want to clarify that though my motion does include applying for the funds in the future, yes, my CAO is saying yes. So then my modification would be to include, to take out the part on consent and to replace that with, review of the letter would be with Supervisor Arroyo and myself for approval.
Okay, appreciate that clarification. I understand the angst I'm hearing about the applying for future funding. And so that may very well need to be an additional discussion, even though we're giving direction today. It seems to me that it would be prudent to perhaps come back with some guidelines around that future funding to satisfy board concerns around that. We're directing it to happen, but if it's possible to fit it into coming back to us with a little additional discussion about that particular element, that seems prudent to me. CAO Hayes?
Yeah, Chairman Drone, so staff can apply for it, and should we be awarded, then we can return to your board to actually accept that? And then that can be a more robust conversation at that time when, you know, the proverbial rubber meets the road as to whether or not we actually want to move forward with that. And we will have more information in terms of what the one-to-one match will actually look like at that time, and more information in terms of what our budget situation is at that time as well.
Great, appreciate that.
I'll still second. I think I need to clarify that I still want to second, but I, my angst is not at all about applying for the funding as much as it is about misunderstanding the way the agenda was framed.
Was laid out.
So now that we've sorted that out, I still second.
I appreciate that clarification.
In the future, we'll call them options A through D instead of one, two, and three.
That sounds good. And I want to say that I did hear a significant concern on the part of staff about modifying this program to execute the 2022 award is going to cause going back to review all of these proposals and significant amount of work that, as I understood it, is probably above and beyond the administrative fees that we're going to acquire. In addition to that, being very budget-minded, that I know we as a board all are, there was also the, the talk about how the state has said, no, the counties are responsible for equity certification. That's an additional cost being laid on us that's not being reimbursed. I heard one of the commenters came up here and suggested that perhaps we could bill the applicants for a small fee for that effort. And I would think if they're getting a $5,000 waiver on their state license fee to pay a $200 or whatever fee for staff time to certify their eligibility, would be a good bargain for just about anybody. That wasn't included in any of these motions, and I'm wondering, you know, it's not actually part of our fee schedule, right? So would staff need some direction in regards to us authorizing staff to charge a fee for that service so that the applicants can get that exemption for? that service so that the applicants can get that exemption for five grand or whatever it might be? Is that something that we're going to need staff direction from this board in order to accomplish that? Because I'm very concerned, our budget is not in good shape.
I think staff would feel more comfortable if we could run an analysis on that actual cost and the time to equity certify an individual, and then we could come back with that as part of that report that we'll be bringing to the board in the future as well.
Okay, but in the meantime, there are people that are saying, commenters that are saying, I got 30 days here, you know, and that kind of stuff, right?
In the meantime, we are continuing, if, if cultivators do reach out and apply under the program, we're still going through the steps to equity qualify them.
Okay, okay, but then you'll come back as part of that in the report.
Correct.
That sounds doable, and I don't think we need to modify anything more with that. Any additional discussion on the part of the board? Supervisor Bone? Have you had your hand?
Hi.
Sorry. Okay, so we're going to call the roll. Thank you, everybody.
Do a roll call.
Please.
Okay, Supervisor Madron.
Yes.
Supervisor Bushnell.
Yes.
Supervisor Wilson.
No.
Supervisor Arroyo.
Yes.
And Supervisor Bone.
Bye.
Thank you, motion carries four zero.
Thank you, everybody, appreciate that. We're running slightly behind. I'm going to give the board a five-minute break, and then we're going to jump into our multimodal study. Apologies for the delays, important stuff, so five-minute recess. All right, we're going to get started again, folks. Let's settle in. Thank you. Okay, so we have item I, I'm sorry, we have a time set, which is our McKinleyville Multimodal Connections Project Report, and we have Director Mattson here to present. And we're also going to have some MCMAC members also present on their roles and thoughts about all this, and then we'll go to board discussion and public comment. Director Mattson, please.
Good morning, Chairman Drone, members of the board. Tom Mattson, Director of Public Works. Before I get started, I do want to thank extensively Redwood Community Action Agency and McKinleyville Municipal Advisory Committee, not only for putting their work together to write the grant itself, but also for MCMAC's leadership throughout the entire project. A do note that this project predated the town center ordinance work, the heavy lifting by our planning department under Director Ford, and I will note that if there are discrepancies between the two, the town center ordinance will take precedence, and so we may have to modify this final report after that is done. However, having said that, this was a significant public outreach within the community, lining us up for future grants that we may, may apply for. With that, I will turn it over to our prime consultant, Paul Martin, with Mark Thomason Associates, has a presentation to go over the report, and then we'll both be available for any questions afterwards. Thank you.
Great, thank you. And Paul is in Zoom, so welcome, Paul.
Thank you, Supervisor Madron, and thank you to the rest of the board as well, and the public participating today. Again, my name is Paul Martin. I'm going to do a screen share here and walk through a presentation. Do you guys see the slides okay?
And yes.
Great, thank you. So again, my name is Paul Martin, I work at a firm called Mark Thomas. I was the project manager, leading our consultant team to work with Caltrans, and the county and the community to advance this project titled the McKinleyville Multimodal Connections Project. All right, so quickly, on the agenda, I've got a couple of things to talk through. Generally, we're going to go over the project objectives and explain better what the planning study was, discuss the creation of the project task force, our study area, some, a summary of some of the community engagement activities, and recommendations that were identified in this report, and what the next steps are. So generally, Caltrans provided funding for the county to advance this planning-level study, and the primary objective starts with really enhancing safety and connectivity for people walking, cycling, or rolling, or accessing transit throughout the McKinleyville area. Also, the northern segment of North Arcata, and really in this study area that will be shown on our next map. We wanted to think about feasible engineering solutions that could really provide that safety and enhancement of that active transportation travel and access to transit, utilizing these things like industry best practices, and based on our community engagement. There's a litany of objectives there you see on the screen, some of those also thinking about existing in future residents broadly as well. This definitely aligns with the county strategic plan. So throughout the project, we assembled a project task force. This is really an advisory group that really provided that feedback throughout the development of the project and advanced it. So it's not just my role as a consultant talking with county staff, that we've got this project task force to be able to provide input from those community members that really had a major hand in making sure that the funding was secured for this grant-funded project to begin with, but also just to advance the project and really make sure that we weren't missing anything as we went through the creation of our recommendations. You see on the right, a variety of different organizations and representatives that were invited to participate and provided input throughout the project. I mentioned briefly, we had a study area that goes on both sides of Mab River. It's primarily that southern end, southern edge of McKinleyville within the dash area shown here. Discussion with the PTF as well as the community really did highlight some additional roadways, but you see additional roadways that are outside of the dash area. But the bulk of it was thinking about roadways such as Central and School and Hiller and so on, and then a couple land outside of our dash line here, but generally, we included those and provided recommendations. So the northern edge generally is railroad in that vicinity, and the southern edge is more the interchange in Arcata and Chiantoli. A quick summary of some of the community engagement, I have two slides here, the first showing our initial phase, or phase one, where we really, two years ago, began the activity with things like walk audits and that PTF meeting, or initial PTF meeting, community workshop. All this was in the midst of COVID. The image in the bottom right is from a prior walk, but our group did walk audits and always had to manage concerns related to the pandemic. So we did a mixture of different activities throughout to really continue that public engagement. There were surveys and photo voice activities, as well as presentations directly to the MCMAC. We had a second phase of public engagement activities, additional meetings with the PTF, community workshops, some small group outreach, and then the image on the right shows this demonstration that we did on Hiller, just west of Central Avenue, where we, for a day, or actually over two days, about a year ago, we were able to demonstrate what a two-way separated bikeway would look like. Within that space of the roadway, the curb-to-curb today, we were able to still maintain travel lanes for vehicles, roadway vehicles that are traveling, but still also provide car parking in a separated bikeway where the cyclists would be separated from moving car traffic by car parking or some sort of physical barrier. We were able to demonstrate that engineering concept with temporary materials, so the public can come see that idea without having to wait for bulldozers and construction and concrete to cure, or the long process that is typically associated with the capital improvement project. And then you see people looking at boards and providing their input on that day. So we really like these demonstration activities as a mechanism to get input from the community. Continuing, now I'm going to skip forward, keep this executive level for the benefit of the group. Our planning study does provide recommendations based on those objectives and the community engagement. There are a variety of recommendations on this screen. It focuses a lot on, say, bicycle improvements, things like bicycle lanes, whether they're on-street or a separated space. Some modifications such as advisory lanes, this concept where you're mixing and matching how the bicyclists and motorists share a really low-volume roadway. Or lane reductions on some streets, maybe taking four travel lanes and reducing it to one travel lane in each direction, and a two-way left-turn lane, like is shown on the upper right. Or improvements like shoulder widening to really serve people walking or cycling, and sometimes as simple as sidewalk gap closures as well. So broadly, there's, that's some images to show some recommendations. There were other items included in the report as well. And we had a multitude of different corridors that we provided recommendations for. This really just lays out in a matrix form that you could see some of those improvements identified. In the body of the report, there's a greater level of detail. We provided discussion along each corridor, within the segment distance, and the engineering recommendations and the cost estimate, as well as phasing recommendations for consideration by the county and the community. This planning-level document is really important sometimes to be able to go after grant funding programs, to be able to provide the, demonstrate really that the public has been involved, that we've coordinated with multiple stakeholders, and really considered what are the most applicable and feasible solutions. So now you have that planning document for this study area. There was some, what I would call interim improvements along Central Avenue, south of School, within the study area. And this really kind of functions as a continuation of the off-ramp from Highway 101. But in that area, we also explored some sort of long-term improvement, which might have a higher-quality separated facility for people to walk and bicycle along Central, between School, and really the Mab River and the 101 bridge structure. There were multiple alternatives considered, and we evaluated each of them based on a set of criteria. The three that are circled on the screen scored the highest, and this gives the county some basis to be able to advance to the next level, or considering those three corridors. We didn't necessarily land on one. There is scoring and evaluation, but there's still some work to be done, as some of these might involve the need for more right-of-way acquisition of private property or other engineering complexities that this planning study just couldn't get to with the budget available. On this screen, you see now the alternative two concept with cross-sections on the left. So we tried to take these engineering concepts and present them, and hopefully it's more intuitive. The image on the upper left really is showing, in today's condition, you have travel lanes along Central, and then landscaped area or hillside on the right edge. And so imagine I'm traveling northbound along Central towards School. We've got hillside, sometimes it dips down, sometimes it's going right up immediately from that curb, from the asphalt along the roadway. In the after image in the bottom left, it shows if you're able to widen out that space and provide a barrier, you can have a dedicated space for both cycling and walking behind a physical barrier. So these ideas were presented to the public, and this understandably is a higher-cost solution, but it would still manage the traffic operations along that roadway and provide a higher-quality connection to travel to this, to and from this cell. Going back to our larger study, we do have next steps recommendations. In the body of the report, I mentioned there are phasing recommendations as well as cost estimates provided. Our near-term project identification is listed in the report, and the recommendation is that the county work with departments and different stakeholders to advance some of those concepts and recommendations provided in the report. And think about medium and long-term projects. Some of the items might be funded with available funds of the county, but others might require grant funding pursuits, so that's where we start to get into medium and long-term project recommendations. And the body of the report provides the detail about the phasing recommendations. That's the end of my presentation. Again, my name is Paul Martin, and I was the consultant that helped assemble our planning-level document for the county. Any questions that I can help with?
Thank you, Paul. Any questions from the board at this time? I'm seeing none. I'll go ahead and ask the MCMAC members to please come up and offer us your thoughts. And again, thank you so much. Really, this is where it originated, from these folks, along with Tom Mattson, Director of Public Works, and again, assistance from RCAA and the grant work, et cetera, but welcome.
Thank you so much. Good morning, Chairman Drone and members of the board. My name is Maya Conrad. I'm a current McKinleyville Municipal Advisory Committee member. I am also the co-chair of the McKinleyville Committee for Active Transportation, and I'm also a former chair of the MCMAC. And I'm joined here today by our past MCMAC Chair, Bonnie Oliver, and our current MCMAC Chair, Lisa Dugan. So you can see that this item is very important to us, and we are here today in, as a group, to urge you to adopt the recommendations for the McKinleyville Multimodal Connections Project so that we can pursue funding for implementation for some of these really important priorities for our community. In 2019, a committee was formed as a grassroots effort to pursue funding for better multimodal transportation. This is a core priority for our unincorporated community of McKinleyville. I co-chaired the committee with Mary Burke and Emily Sincorn and RCAA, along with Tom Mattson and the Public Works Department, and also Caltrans, were instrumental in helping us pursue a planning grant through Caltrans. Two key priorities for our community were identified over four years ago through our subcommittee, and those, those broad priorities were confirmed through the multimodal projects community outreach. One, the southern gateway, or as Paul referred to it, south of School Road, where 101 and the Central Avenue off-ramp are, is an enormous impediment to bicycle commuters, and it's also incredibly dangerous. Over the past decade, there have been multiple deaths and injuries for people, pedestrians and bicyclists. So that we really need to change. And with the final completion of the Bay Trail, the importance of bicycle commuters to be able to access Arcata and Eureka, southern destinations, to and from McKinleyville is critical. Second, and more broadly, safer multimodal connections are needed throughout our town of McKinleyville. As we grow and enhance our town center, people desperately want safer walk and stroll and roll options through town. This has been a resounding theme throughout the last three years of our town center ordinance work. We want slower traffic and people to feel safe walking, strolling, rolling. We also have an issue with the last mile concept. So we have public transportation that goes through our main thoroughfare of Central Avenue, but communities, households on both the east side and the west side of Central Avenue have a difficult time actually accessing the public transportation. So if we can improve some multimodal connections to public transport, it will also facilitate better public transport. And with that, I'm going to turn it over to Bonnie Oliver.
Thank you, Maya, and board. Over the course of the McKinleyville Multimodal Study, the McKinleyville Municipal Advisory Committee hosted three presentations by the study team at our meetings for information and input of the community and the full membership of the MCMAC approximately every six months. Members of the MCMAC Trails Subcommittee, or Multimodal Connections Subcommittee, has also served on the project task force, which included Maya Conrad and Mary Burke and myself. The task force work, task force work included regular project coordination and feedback meetings, mostly on Zoom. Last December, after this final draft report was issued, MCMAC sent a letter of support to the Board of Supervisors in support of the draft report. to the Board of Supervisors in support of the draft report. Since this letter was not included in your packet, please allow me to read a couple of paragraphs from that letter. This very comprehensive draft report and its appendices effectively detail the study process and findings and accurately illustrate how many locations in its McKinleyville study area require improvement in multimodal connection infrastructure. It offers many options for addressing these needed infrastructure improvements and provides good comparative information on relative costs of various possible solutions. Going forward, McMap urges the County of Humboldt Public Works Department to continue to involve local McKinleyville partners in decision-making related to the ranking of project priorities and choosing solution options in the future implementation of multimodal improvement projects in our area, including the McMap and MCSD. We also recommend that this report be consulted whenever road improvements and new developments are being planned within the project study area. Finally, we urge the Board of Supervisors to direct Public Works to pursue funding for implementation of the projects highlighted in this report, perhaps including the development of a proposed timeline for each project in coordination with local stakeholders, including the McMap and MCSD. So as mentioned in this letter, the report presents possible options for dealing with McKinleyville's multimodal connections issues in the study area. The staff report recommendation for this multimodal report, number three, direct Public Works to incorporate the recommendations in the report on future projects within the MMCP planning area. I would like to urge the Board of Supervisors to include in this direction to Public Works that they are to involve McKinleyville stakeholders, including the McMap, MCSD, and others, in any decision-making on which options to pursue as future projects, and in fine-tuning the details of the preliminary solutions and options presented. Thank you all. And I would like to introduce our current Chair, Lisa Dugan.
Good morning, Chair Madron and Board of Supervisors. It's lovely to be before you two weeks in a row. I hope you don't get tired of me or McKinleyville. First, I think I want to say how very exciting this is, that a grassroots project that started in a subcommittee of the McMap is here before you today for the potential of funding. And to me, it really highlights the importance of partnerships. And I keep getting the phrase in my head, if I can remember it correctly. If you want to go fast, go alone. If you want to go far, go together. And so beginning as a subcommittee of the McMap and in working in partnership with RCAA and then the county, this feels like an important partnership that's got us this far. And so now, speaking of the last mile, here we are at the potential of funding at that last mile of seeing this come to fruition, and that's really exciting. And we're hopeful that the county is going to give us priority, which I'm pretty sure Tom knows how important McKinleyville is and all this work that has been done to get us here, and to continue to use the partnerships, RCAA, McMap, and those who have helped put this together. In particular, Tom stole my thunder a little bit in saying that the town center study is within this multimodal project area, and so there's going to be conflict there. There's going to be choices to be made, and I appreciate hearing from him that the town center study will trump. And there may be places where it's important for us to have those conversations about what should truly happen. So, you know, we have questions as to how. There are probably about eight studies out there for Humboldt County and some in particular for McKinleyville, and how will those get knitted together? The Safe Routes to School work that's been done is one that comes to mind. Work that will be done in the town center that has the transportation mode comes to mind along with this study. And so ensuring that those, all of those are taken into account each other, and where there's conflicts, we're ironing those out. So that's a question that we have, is how will those conflicts and how will we knit those together? And I believe that's all I want to say, is we're thankful for the partnership. We're thankful for your support going forward and to continue to utilize those partnerships to go far together. So thank you very much.
Great. Thank you very much. Appreciate all your hard work. Okay. Any questions, clarifications from the board before I go to the public? Supervisor Bone.
I appreciate the report, and for a minor $25,000 investment, it looks like we got a lot of bang for our buck.
Absolutely, absolutely. Any other comments, questions? Supervisor Arroyo.
Sure. Well, in keeping with what you just said and expectations and hopes for the future, I have some other comments I'll make later, but I was wondering if, Tom, if you'd be willing to elaborate a bit on some of the next steps. I know the conclusion here is a little brief. It says there's opportunity for low-cost projects through regular maintenance. And then, you know, obviously, there are grant programs that, you know, this project could make us competitive for, but what are you thinking as far as next steps?
So the next step really is to get into prioritization with the MCAP of which projects that we want to push forward first. The South Central is a very important project, but it's probably the most difficult, and it requires, you know, coordination with Caltrans because half of that road up into McKinleyville is a state highway. They were heavily involved in this project, so they know something could be coming with them. But things like road striping, buffered lanes, things like that can really be done effectively and quickly and efficiently through maintenance. We have our own striper, so we can do those kinds of things. We had previously discussed, you know, Edge Lane Road for Ocean Ave. That can still come back with discussions with the McMap, hopefully, and maybe even other roads in McKinleyville. I know we looked at the roads in the Arcata bottoms. There are some issues with that and having to do, you know, get permission through the California Traffic Devices Control Committee because that would be an experimental project. But they are, you know, things like that can be done. They're very effective. They're very cost-effective, and they are very, you know, they have proven safety items. So really, the next step is to go back with the McMap and sit down and go through the report and prioritize all the different things that are listed in there so that we can start working on them.
Great, thank you. And I want to point out that Supervisor Arroyo was actually at RCAA, helping to facilitate some of these meetings and other parts to it before she took her new role here. So thank you for that. Any other comments from the board? Seeing none. Supervisor, okay. So let's go to public comment. Thank you, folks, and please stick around. We've got one hand up in the Zoom, and that is 5603. You've got three minutes. Star Six to unmute, welcome.
Good morning. This is Colin Fith, Executive Director of CRTP, the Coalition for Responsible Transportation Priorities. I wanted to just thank the McMap and the county and RCAA for moving this plan forward and working hard on it for the last couple of years. I think the members of the McMap and Director Mattson did a great job of sort of summarizing the situation and the needs. And so I guess I just want to highlight a couple of items that I think are particularly important. One is, as Director Mattson was discussing, a number of the recommended improvements are really low-cost, essentially just restriping, and can likely be accomplished with essentially zero additional cost if they're coupled with regular repaving. So we hope that those kinds of projects can be built into the repaving schedule and prioritized. The second thing is that this whole process really came about because of heightened concern about the Southern Gateway area, which is that connection between Southern Central Avenue and North Arcata. And this is maybe the most dangerous place to walk or bike or roll in McKinleyville, and it's also one of the only ways to get between McKinleyville and Arcata while walking, biking, or rolling. The only other route over the Hammond Trail Bridge requires a detour that can be miles long. So consequently, people do walk and bike there, and people are hit and injured and killed. And several people, as was mentioned, have died in that area in recent years. So this document narrows down some of the planning options for the corridor. It's really just a start, and I just want to urge you to not let this sit on a shelf and to do everything in your power to move forward with planning and constructing a safe route for people walking, biking, and rolling between two of the area's biggest communities, McKinleyville and Arcata. Thank you.
Thank you, commenter. And we'll bring it back here to the audience here today. Anybody that would like to speak on this item, please come on over and line up so we can be efficient and welcome.
Kentsawski, North Bank Road does have potential there. It's very dangerous now for bicyclists. A lot of times, I've slowed up for a mile or two before I could safely pass them on that road. That's how I get to McKinleyville from Blue Lake, which is possibly a trail system that would go to McKinleyville, maybe, and may not be going in other areas, at least not as inexpensively. I did, I'm trying to remember the guy's name. He's Complete Streets. I think he was in McKinleyville a month ago. I didn't attend. I had him in Blue Lake. Dan Burnham, I think is his name. Is that right?
Dan Burden.
Burden, okay. Anyway, he had some interesting ideas, and this is secondhand from somebody who did attend, one of your department heads attended that, not Tom here, but had mentioned that possibly was looked at, and I didn't see it in this particular assessment, was to convert some of those stoplights to roundabouts and to go to one lane in each direction thereby accomplishing possibly some things that might be longer-term project. I would love roundabouts personally in certain areas. They don't belong in T-intersections, as far as I'm concerned. Their main thing needs to be in areas where you have major cross-street traffic. I think maybe an assessment for roundabout should be, if 95% of your traffic goes through in either direction, that might not be an appropriate place. But when you have high-density areas, high-traffic areas, I think they are possibly a way. So some of these things may get incorporated a little bit. I think his study may be available. Maybe you'll sync up with that and see what solutions might be available for that. With those of us who claim to be autistic, there's no box. We're always willing to look at any possibility, and that's a real important thing, to not feel like you have limitations. Obviously, quite more expensive projects, but, you know, Caltrans seems to find money when they need it, and maybe there's an off-ramp up by Trinidad they don't need to put in, and they can reallocate the money back into this project. They come up to you to speak.
Thank you, commenter. Anybody else wishing to speak today? Seeing none, we'll bring it back here to the board. I appreciate pointing out that the town center ordinance process has been kind of parallel to this, although started just a little after, although it was supposed to start 20 years ago. At any rate, a lot of exciting planning going on in McKinleyville these days. And one good example of how the town center ordinance process and this plan will intersect is along McKinleyville Avenue between Hiller Road and Railroad. On the chart that was presented, sorry I didn't catch this earlier, but it has a list of all the streets and what site types of improvements might occur on those streets. And the McKinleyville Avenue doesn't have anything listed. And I think what will probably happen between Hiller Road and Railroad is that on the east side of McKinleyville Avenue, there is no sidewalk currently. It's actually a ditch that's actually a live stream that flows year-round. And so what will most likely happen is that that stream will be rerouted into the town center's wetlands park component, which will take up probably about a third of the western area to the west of Safeway and that shopping center, which will actually make it into a creek instead of a ditch. And it'll be combined with a bunch of wetland mitigation and work there, which will then allow for a sidewalk and bike lane to be constructed along McKinleyville Avenue. And that's the one missing piece of the sidewalk along McKinleyville Avenue in that area. So that's just an example of how some of these things might interface. It's not that one can overrule the other, per se, but they're going to be interfaced. How can we accomplish both things in the process? So I'll bring it back to the board for any comments, questions. Supervisor Wilson and then Arroyo.
Thank you, Chair Madron. And that wasn't me singing. I'm not that good. And moving forward, actually, I would ask that maybe you make the motion since it's your community. And I want to say this is really important work. We, as a nation, are at a 41-year-high in pedestrian deaths. We've been increasing in pedestrian deaths for the last 41 years. We're at a 10% increase in California in the last three years. Between 2014 and 2018, it was a 26% increase in California. So we're talking pedestrian deaths and bicyclists are actually going up significantly. It's related to how we design our spaces. It actually also relates to how we design our vehicles. Turns out, the taller the vehicle, the more likely someone is going to die when being hit by it. But also, anything over 20 miles an hour, your likelihood of dying as a pedestrian goes up exponentially. So keeping our speeds low in communities is extremely important, and these design parameters are required because people will drive. Signs are helpful, but the road geometry actually makes the most impact. And so I just appreciate all the work that's been done. I appreciate the work that's been done in McKinleyville. I'm actually looking forward to our other communities being addressed similarly. I know there's been work being done in Garberville around this issue and other spaces, and I think it's important that all our small areas are dealt with in this way. I know that even in some of our communities, I've seen, you know, what's happened over the years is that we have made roads as wide as tanks, literally, because that's the federal highway standard that was created in the 50s, was to move tanks, and that became the standard 12-foot width. And that's what our cars have then adapted to. And then now, our larger vehicles are both engineered and machined in a way that they drive like what were sports cars not just 15 years ago. So we have very large vehicles driving very quickly through these spaces. It divides communities. It's hard to cross the street, even when we're talking about communities like Freshwater and other places like that. We'd have a road down the middle of it. It becomes a dangerous divide, and we have to do what we can to deal with this. And I just appreciate this work in McKinleyville because it's going to make a big difference. And we also know that these improvements improve economies as well. It's very, very important, actually slows people down, they actually stay in those communities, they actually buy in those communities, they walk in those communities, and they're present in those spaces, and they're safer from a crime perspective as well. So thank you so much for all that work. I am very encouraging of this. More, more, more. Thanks.
Supervisor Arroyo.
Thank you. Well, this project is near and dear to my heart, and I want to, it's already been said, but I do really want to take the time to applaud the efforts of the Transportation Committee with the McMap, you all, and Mary Burke. So those of you here today, Mary Burke, and I'm sure there were other players, pushed for this. And then, you know, I want to applaud the work of Emily Sinkorn at RCAA, formerly at RCAA, and she and I wrote this grant, and it was just shy of $200,000 that helped to cover this work. And then, a few years later, I was able to work on the project. So it's near and dear to my heart. It's really important, and I went out and watched firsthand some of the behavior of pedestrians, bicyclists, and motorists in the whole project area as we were writing the grant to try to understand the conditions and to really match that up with the data because the data is powerful. Just along Central Avenue, this report says there were upwards of five pedestrian-involved collisions per mile, and upwards of one per mile for bicyclists. And as has been said, there have been deaths there. It doesn't, one thing I heard from community members who attended some of the public outreach events who don't regularly bicycle or walk for transportation was that people could use the Hammond Trail. And the Hammond Trail is not the most direct route for people to get from the neighborhoods of McKinleyville to destinations like Cal Poly-Humboldt or other destinations, particularly southbound in Arcata. It requires going many miles out of your way, and it's just not what people do when they're commuting. So I am really supportive of the alternatives that are fleshed out here. I know the short-term alternatives are great, and a lot of them involve pavement marking and some other accessible options. But what would really make a difference for people, safety-wise, is the things that are more expensive, that involve, you know, separating, providing some physical safety between pedestrians and bicyclists and motorists on the roadway. And some of the more costly options are, I believe, you know, after being part of this project, really what's going to make a difference for people in their daily experience. So I am strongly supportive of those, and if there's a way that I can, I will put this out there. I know it's your district, but if there's a way that I can stay involved in the project and any ongoing conversations with the community, because I feel like I really got to know the ins and outs of this project, I'd love to be involved. So I'll just ask staff and Supervisor Madron to keep me in the loop however I can help. And I do think this is a compelling suite of projects for future funding, and frankly, the reason for that is the data supports, you know, sadly, we the reason for that is the data supports, you know, sadly, we, a lot of the funding streams tie injuries and fatalities to funding, and so this is competitive for those because the sad reality is that people have been injured and died. So I'm, I'm just hugely supportive of us pursuing whatever funding streams we can to make this happen.
Great. Thank you very much. And I'm going to go ahead and make a motion, a little out of protocols for the chair to do that, but appreciate Supervisor Wilson's suggestion. So in this case, we're going to accept, and I would move that we accept and file the report and direct Public Works to incorporate the recommendations in the report on future projects within the MMCP planning area. And is there a second to that?
Second.
So we have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion by the board? Seeing none, let's do a roll call vote, please.
Thank you. Supervisor Bushnell? Yes. Supervisor Bowe?
You bet.
Supervisor Wilson?
Yes.
Supervisor Medron?
Yes.
And Supervisor Arroyo?
Yes.
Thank you. Message carries 5-0.
Great. Thank you, everybody, and thank you for all your hard work.
Thank you.
And you can do this kind of thing. All right. And so we have a time set at 12 noon, but we're actually going to fit in the Human Resources item on the agenda. I've been told that that can go fairly quickly, and we're going to get that in, then we'll go to our closed session. I know that's the death knell, isn't it, when you say something like that? But that's great. Thank you, folks. And so let's go ahead and have this presentation on the, let's see, adopt, we're considering adopting a resolution to initiate a conversion process from an inter-agency merit system, or IMS, to an approved local merit system, or ALMS, for merit system services. And we have a wonderful team here today to present. Thank you.
That is correct. Good morning.
Morning.
Board members. We do have a presentation that we sent to go through, and as you all know, brevity is my strongest suit, so I'm going to go as quickly as I possibly can.
Okay.
But while, while that's getting queued up, I can sort of just get started. There we go. So you read off the title of the item that we have before your board, and we'll get into a little bit more of what that means because a lot of those words probably don't mean a lot. We've talked about this at a previous meeting a little bit, so we can, oh, you have the clicker. Nice. So the impacted departments related to this item would be Human Resources, the Department of Child Support Services, and the Department of Health and Human Services. I'll just give you a quick moment. You know me, Zach. You know Bennett, the Director of Child Support Services. We have the newly-appointed Assistant Director of Child Support Services, Stacy Costa. I believe she is on Zoom. And then Paige Plummer, the Deputy Director of Employee Services with the DHS, here to present this to you today. So this is where the brevity sets in. Okay, so background information. What is, or what are merit system services positions? Merit system services positions are federally funded positions for programs within social services and child support. So this is going to include a lot of, or all positions in social services, almost all positions in social services. We don't want to get into the fine, fine details on this, including child welfare, and then essentially every single position in child support other than your director position. Currently, the process to hire for these positions is handled by the California Department of Human Resources, or CALHR. So you hear that a little bit throughout the presentation. And they are tasked with ensuring that we, we follow what's called a federal merit-based process. So are currently, the County of Humboldt's recruitment process, we believe, does follow a merit-based process. However, there's a process that you have to go through in order for CALHR to approve your county to take on those recruitment efforts, and that's why this item is in front of your board today. And why? Why are we wanting to, to bring this before your board? CALHR implemented some pretty broad-sweeping changes effective at the beginning of this year, in our opinion, that were not really ready to be implemented, and it's resulted in some pretty significant impacts to our programs. And further, even if it left in place, if they were more fleshed out, it does serve to make a recruitment process take far longer than it should, especially given, you know, the needs that we have to, to staff some of these really, really important positions at the county. Okay. So county designation. So there's two types of county designations that you can have when you have these merit system services positions. One is an inter-agency merit system, of which the County of Humboldt is one, or you can be an approved local merit system. So in short, if you're an inter-agency merit system, CALHR will administer the recruitment process for the most part, and really, the county doesn't have a lot of say in at least the initial pieces of that process. An approved local merit system, if approved by CALHR through this process that's in front of your board, we would still be required to be held to those merit principles, which we'll touch on here in a second, but CALHR will have said, okay, we've reviewed all your processes and you're good to go. You can go ahead and administer those yourself. So what is the impact of this change happening if your board chooses to adopt this resolution? We've, we've looked at the numbers between the Department of Child Support Services and Department of Health and Human Services, and we anticipate somewhere around 82, 85 to 100 additional recruitments to be taken on by County Human Resources. There would additionally be increase in reviews for classification requests. So currently, all the classifications in the merit system services positions are overseen by CALHR, and essentially, we get those from them, and then we implement them. We don't really have a ton of say in what those classifications say. We do meet and confer with labor over how much we pay those positions, but there's really not a lot that we can do as far as changing classifications. So in the current state, it would be really difficult for HR to take on another 85 to 100 recruitments. Recruitments do happen to be actually a pretty time-consuming process. So the Department of Health and Human Services and Child Support Services have agreed to fund a position in Human Resources to take on this additional workload. So merit-based principles. I am not going to go super-duper deep into this. You can read what's on the board or on the slide, but that is essentially what CALHR is going to be looking at and saying, do you have processes in place that meet these sort of standards for all of these different principles in a merit-based way? And as you can probably imagine, the CALHR actually gets to sort of determine what that level is, and that's sort of the issue that we're seeing here, is they're really going way far and above and beyond what we all believe, and many other counties believe is necessary. So that's what we would be going through if your, if your board chooses to move this forward, is essentially determining, do we meet all these merit-based principles through that sort of back and forth with CALHR? And with that, I am going to turn it over to Paige to talk about some of the impacts of these changes.
Great.
Good afternoon, Board Chair and Board members. We're going to just say.
You got your mic?
There you go.
Green light.
Good afternoon, Board Chair and Board members. My name is Paige Plummer. I'm the Deputy Director for Employee Services in the Department of Health and Human Services. I'd like to share with you some of the impacts that these CALHR changes have had to our merit system services recruitments. Since January 1st, several changes have been implemented for IMS counties such as ours. These include a new requirement for at least one competitive examination per recruitment. The exam must be developed by CALHR prior to them posting the recruitment. Unfortunately, before, before this change was implemented, we only had written exams in place, so this has led to our recruitments being posted timely. Additionally, CALHR will only recognize the four exam types that you see here before you. They will no longer recognize a county examination type, such as an oral examination, as a sufficient exam. With that, it means that our merit system services candidates must go through an additional examination step that's not required for other candidates for our non-merit system services recruitments. Additionally, CALHR's new target timeframe for recruitment is 83 business days or 17 weeks. This doesn't include the additional time it takes for candidates to then go through interviews and for the selected candidate to go through our clearance phase, such as a background, before they can start in the position. Per CALHR, candidates who minimally qualify for a recruitment based on their education must now submit transcripts, certifications, and licenses at the time that they apply, and this is taking additional time for CALHR to now screen for minimum qualifications for these positions. Additionally, without advance notice to our county, CALHR revoked the option for our Masters in Social Work students, or MSW students from Cal Poly Humboldt and other students, to apply within six months of graduation. This resulted in, in several of our MSW recent graduates being screened out for our social worker recruitments this May. Counties were also not given the opportunity to develop examinations prior to these changes taking effect in January, nor identified gaps in process, and we're hearing from candidates that they are not receiving communication from CALHR about their application statuses These recruitment changes have impacted several DHHS programs. Our merit system services positions include classifications such as eligibility specialists, social workers, social service aides, office assistants, and other support classifications. Some of these classifications have non-merit counterparts performing the same work but who are not held to CALHR's process. In social services, we have approximately 91 vacant merit positions. We've observed a recent eligibility specialist recruitment that took CALHR over 50 days to post. We also had a welfare fraud investigator recruitment that we had to alert CALHR to expedite the exam so that it would be completed with enough time for the new hires to complete our CR Law Enforcement Academy. The academy is only held two times per year, so if we had missed that window, it would have left our special investigations unit without qualified candidates for several months. Hiring managers have also reported concerns over the relevancy of the exams that CALHR requires and whether they are testing the knowledge, skills, and abilities required to do the position. Recruitment delays have also made it difficult for programs to plan for coverage of mandated services. In child welfare services, we have approximately 69 vacant merit positions, which is a 32% vacancy rate for the division. We observed that CWS continuous recruitments were closed by CALHR at the end of 2022 without a process in place for reopening them timely. In April, we were notified that CALHR would no longer allow our MSW candidates to apply for our social worker for recruitments, and this unannounced change had resulted in those May graduates being screened out for our recruitments. In May, the Humboldt County Grand Jury also issued a report with several negative findings related to recruitments, which are administered by CALHR. Additionally, CWS has received an increase in CDSS audits and compliance reviews due to community complaints regarding completing timely investigations. CWS has had to prioritize staffing in emergency response areas over non-safety-related positions. Some units also have higher caseloads than the target caseload goals, and supervisors and managers have had to be in the field and cover caseloads, which limits their ability to provide support to staff. In adult protective services and in-home support services, we currently have eight vacant merit positions. We're seeing small candidate pools, and this is resulting in failed recruitments. We're currently running a social worker 1-2 recruitment for a third time this year and running a social worker 3 recruitment for a second time. Without qualified candidates, IHSS ongoing continues to be on a quality improvement plan with CDSS due to not being compliant with timely reassessments. Compliance and IHSS intake assessment is decreasing, and it is likely that IHSS will be put on a compliance plan in this area as well. The program has spent hours developing the required exams with CALHR, which haven't always been used. This has required program management to spend hours away from their regular duties only for the exam type to be changed by CALHR later. The program has also received complaints from clients and the community stemming from staff not being able to respond timely to requests and questions. The impact that we're seeing to DHHS recruitments includes that we're struggling to receive consistent communication from CALHR about the status of our merit recruitment. This has created a strain on DHHS employee services as our staff has to reach out to CALHR repeatedly in order for a recruitment to move forward. Between January 1st and August 1st, data provided by CALHR showed that the average recruitment timeframe was 75 days. Each recruitment received an average of 16 applicants, of those applicants, an average of 10 net minimum qualifications, and an average of six passed the required exam and were placed on the eligible list. While CAL, while CALHR requires the exam to be developed before the recruitment is posted, we must wait until after the recruitment closes to see if less than 10 candidates applied so that we can choose a faster examination type. Feedback from candidates about these changes include candidates have shared that they are aware of CWS's staffing crisis and that they are shocked at how lengthy the process is. Candidates have questioned whether they really want to apply because they have to take an exam before they can interview. An intern who was a recent MSW graduate was initially told by CALHR that they could apply prior to graduation and later told that they could not. They ultimately had to wait months to reapply for a social worker recruitment. Multiple candidates have expressed frustration that they can no longer apply within six months of graduation. Applicants have stated that they passed minimum qualifications but were screened out by CALHR's exam. And finally, recent hires have stated that they had to wait over six months to hear back about a recruitment and that the required exams have very little relevancy to the job that they were hired to do. With that, thank you for sharing the impacts that we've been experiencing in DHHS. I am going to turn over to Director Hoffman and Assistant Director Costa for Child Support Services perspective.
Great. Thank you.
Good afternoon, Supervisors. I'm Bennett Hoffman, the Director of Child Support Services. I'm going to keep it brief. A lot of the issues that we have are the same issues you've heard from DHHS. I'll just touch on a couple of things related specifically to child support. We've got, this situation has caused significant delays in recruitment and kind of a domino effect because right now we have a number of promotional opportunities in the department. And while we're waiting for, to fill that position, then it takes up to six months. Then we have to backfill the other position, which can take another six months. So we're talking about possibly a year because of these delays that it'll take to get somebody in the door when we have a promotional opportunity. We've had a number of critical retirements recently. So just like everybody else, we're struggling with recruitments and retention, we were actually improving. I felt like we were getting better. These new requirements from CALHR have just stymied us now, and we're, we're finding that our recruitment times have doubled. This is a statewide issue for all merit system child support departments. So back in January, this was brought to my attention by other directors. I had met with those directors. We started talking about these concerns with the State Child Support Office, and they immediately went to talk to CALHR to address these issues. And I wanted to let you know that this wasn't the first step here. Back in January, we started working with the state trying to resolve this issue. The State Child Support Department pays to have us in the merit system, and so they had an interest in trying to get merit to, to change or at least make their requirements a little bit easier so we could continue our recruitment process, and we haven't had any luck in that. In addition to increase workloads for the staff because of the staff shortages, it's also increased the workload for our staff that have to deal with merit system and deal with the HR process in child support. As Director O'Handon mentioned, this affects all of the child support positions. We're all, all our positions are merit system positions. And I think the biggest issue for us is just the lack of communication and follow-through from CALHR since these new processes have been implemented. Sometimes these vacancies just fall into a black hole where we don't hear from CALHR. It takes us a while to get answers from them about the recruitments, and we've just kind of lost the ability to control the timeline for vacancies and plan our recruitments. I'll turn it back over to Director O'Handon. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. So that gives you kind of a background of the impacts here, and I'll just mention, you know, the staff, and we're talking about recruitment. And I'll just mention, you know, the staff, and we're talking about recruitment, but really this ultimately hits the community, right? When we're talking about these very vital positions. So that's, I think, why all of us are so in line on this issue and also why we feel it's so important to move this forward. But some of the expected benefits, obviously streamlining the process. We have positions who are literally doing the exact same thing, but they have different job titles, they have to go through a different recruitment process, but they may be sitting literally right next to each other. So it's really kind of odd that they have to go through these separate processes. So we can use the same recruitment process, which has been really refined over the last three or four years to where we actually moved quite quickly. As Deputy Director Plummer mentioned, it takes about 83 business days for a Cal HR recruitment. If all things go based on our timelines in HR, we're looking at about a 29-day turnaround, and that's if every single day of the timeframes we put in place are used, which is usually not the case. Usually, we're going much faster than that. So that's from the time we open up the recruitment, from the time we send the list of people who are eligible for hire to the department. Now, 29 days, that doesn't mean if there's additional clearances and things that have to happen, that's not accounted for in that because that really varies by department. But essentially, to get a list of people to the department takes about 29 days, and it can be a lot faster. The communication piece, and that's something that I've even encountered recently with Cal HR in unrelated recruitment matters, has just been pretty atrocious, to be honest. I don't think they have enough folks to be responsive, so to give them a little bit of credit there, I guess, but it has been pretty frustrating. We're pretty great in HR. We have a pretty good turnaround time, and especially if this, if we have an analyst that is assigned to these specific positions, people will have a point person, they will learn these positions, they will know this person, and they will have someone that they can go to. And it obviously will reduce the time to hire for these positions. So those are what we see as sort of the biggest benefits. Also attached to this item, so we had a small working group that put all of this together, this presentation, all the documentation that we'll have to send to Cal HR if your board chooses to move this forward, talked about having your board approve a letter and sending that to the state. And it is kind of interesting because we're saying, we want to leave the system and become our own Alms County, but we also want to send this letter telling them to stop doing these changes. So very briefly, how the process works is if your board approves this, we will jump on it and we will send the requested information to the state. But from what we've heard, even if we're doing what we need to do, as you've heard, communication issues have been a problem, it could take them a long time just to get back to us, and we're still sitting here with these issues in place. We're also hopeful that it'll kind of act as a sort of dual-track thing where we're saying, hey, you shouldn't move these things forward if you're not ready to do so, and we want to leave the system, here's all the issues we have with the system and why it shouldn't be a problem for us when we try to move forward. So we're sort of saying, stop doing what you're doing, please. And then also, as we try to go through this process of becoming an Alms County, you need to really consider these additional requirements that you're asking that are really kind of unreasonable. So with that, we can move on to the last slide. So these are the recommendations. I'm not going to read them verbatim to you, but we're mainly seeking your approval of the resolution. So essentially, approval from the governing body needs to go to Cal HR. That's what initiates this process. We added in authorizing myself to be able to finalize those documents, again, to try to move this forward as quickly as possible. Obviously, if there was an approval, we would bring an item back to your board and let you know, here's the final approval. But any sort of documents throughout that process that may need to be authorized, I would be given the authority if your board chooses to do that, approving the allocation of one analyst, and then obviously considering that letter. So with that, I know we're moving along here. If you have any questions, we did have some staff members from the departments who were here and likely will want to make some comment about their experience. Not sure if your board wants to let that happen. I'd look to counsel for process on whether that's public comment or either way.
Great, thank you for that detailed presentation. Appreciate it. So Supervisor Bone.
Grand Jury wrote in 2018 that this was a problem, and I think again in 2014. This has been ongoing. I've heard of numerous people getting hired or getting the nod, we're going to hire you, but it'll take 45 to 65 days. These are people with student loans that need to make payments and, you know, what are they going to do? And the problem is, they go out, because they have a degree, they go out and find a better-paying job or another job, another job that's better paying, maybe not in their field, and then they decide to stay there. And so then we lose an applicant who's educated, ready to rock and roll, and that's a big part of it. And we have hiring fairs, everybody wants to know, but everybody wants to know when they go to work. And I think this is an in-house situation because I think we still have some verbal contact with an applicant and stuff like that. I mean, we've all bought something on Amazon with just a ad and been sorry. So I mean, I think you need to have some sort of interaction. I think this allows you guys to expand that and keep it in-house. And I have full faith in the departments. I know Child Welfare Services, but this has been a huge issue with DHHS long before Connie was here. I can remember the complaints, and it's getting worse instead of better. And we have qualified applicants that just want to go to work. I think our job is to get them to work in a timely fashion. And then today, the whole morning, we've talked about addictions, we've talked about all these programs that we need to work on and help people, but it doesn't matter if there's nobody on the other side of the table to help them. So this is a great thing, and I'm glad to see it finally come to fruition.
Okay, so we'll go to public comment. I've got one number in Zoom, but no hand up. And we'll bring it here to those in the audience today. If you'd like to comment on this item, please come forward. Director Beck.
Thank you, Chair and members of the board. I just want to thank Director O'Hannon for hearing staff's concerns and worries about processes. We did have several people in the audience today just to say, we appreciate moving forward. There's so much work that needs to be done, and we have to have staff to do that. So I appreciate the work of staff. Paige did a really nice analysis about merit systems in general and the issues, and so I appreciate that also. And then I did just want to say that, you know, our associations, our Welfare Directors' Association and Child Support also tried to connect with Cal HR with no results. So just the need for this is huge, so thank you.
Thank you for that. Anybody else here today I'd like to make comment? Please come forward. Welcome.
Good afternoon. Good afternoon, Chairman, Board. I work for the county as a county employee, but I'm speaking as a community member, and I wanted to reflect how this affects current and prospective employees with a brief story. I had a friend who applied for eligibility specialist trainee, and they were denied for not meeting minimum qualifications. I was surprised, others were surprised, thought they were qualified. Fine. We worked a lot on the paper application to ensure that it reflected all of his experience at all of his jobs. It's great, there was no way it wasn't going to pass this time. He applied again and was denied again for not meeting minimum qualifications. Very surprised this time. We encouraged appealing, did not get a reply until prodded by Employee Services to reply. It was outside of their timeframe, somebody was on vacation, but he had just not gotten a response to emails or calls to multiple times. When he finally did speak to somebody, they were pretty condescending to him, and it was upheld that he was not qualified. He applied a third time with the exact same application. This time, he passed minimum qualifications magically. He was interviewed and hired, and he started in January, and he's still with the county. And that's part of the effort that we've been making to reduce call center call times. Would have been nice if he had come on board a little earlier. He would not have continued to go through this process without very strong encouragement from me and another county employee. He absolutely would have given up right at the start. And the negative effects of the denial and the treatment and the condescending customer service and the inconsistency of being, meeting qualifications and not meeting qualifications with the same application and the delayed employment for months, that reflects on the county and DHHS. The applicants don't know that, you know, don't separate it out. It's their experience applying with the county, and I love working for the county, and I want to bring others on board because we're great. And this experience scares qualified people away. So you may all recognize this clearly, but thank you on behalf of current and prospective employees who are proud of where they work and want to see a change. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Welcome.
Executive summary of the presentation would be, Cal HR bad, Humboldt County HR good. I think that pretty well sums it up. The same as Cal recycle, we have a whole bunch of things start with Cal, seem to be dysfunctional. So strongly recommend in-house, trust what's going on here with your staff, and that was my brief summary.
Thank you. And we have one more commenter. Welcome.
Thank you, Board. Ryan Bishop, Deputy Director of Social Services. I just wanted to take a quick opportunity to say, we do have 91 vacancies in social services. It is a time to act. We have tried literally everything with this team here, from trying to keep applicants engaged to trying to get data from Cal HR to see if our recruitment efforts are successful. All these things are like pulling teeth. We get responses from Cal HR sometimes that just say, hey, they're not in the office this week, or they're out sick, and there's just nobody there to support us at that level. And we would really just like to see this in-house for efficiency's sake. We see this take 17 weeks is their goal, which they're often not hitting. It took them 50 days to post one of our eligibility recruitments, just to post it, and they're saying it's going to take 17 weeks is their target to get us from, hey, we want a recruitment to, you guys can interview. 17 weeks? No, unacceptable. We need to get people in the door, we need to support our community and our programs, our call center, and our staff who are out there busting their butts trying to keep up with the workload. So we would appreciate your support. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Welcome.
Hi, I'm Carrie Schrock. I manage Adult Services, which includes In-Home Supportive Services and Adult Protective Services. As you heard in the presentation, we are on a compliance plan again, we're going to be on it again. We've been operating with IHSS with roughly 50% vacancies. We have uncovered caseloads, we have about 1,000 cases that are uncovered. I have supervisors that are having to do, you know, field work. It's pretty demoralizing to staff that are there, that are working hard every day, yet are still on a compliance plan, which is really due to our staffing. In IHSS, we had a recruitment, we've had our third recruitment for a social worker 1/2 because the prior ones, we just either did not get enough applicants or when we do get applicants, then the hiring process is taking too long of a time. Also, the statistics about us being on our second recruitment for social worker 3, that's now we're on our third recruitment because our last recruitment with Merit Systems, we had, I found out that we had three people that applied, but none of them met the minimum qualifications, so we have to post yet again. And I'm also thinking about what Laurel had said about the person that applied and applied repeatedly and finally got through. There are probably people out there in the community that have applied that are just going to give up and that aren't going to apply again. So I just strongly support us moving away from being a merit program, so hopefully you will all support that. So, thanks.
Thank you very much. All right, bring it back here to the board. There's several items under a potential motion here listed, but we'll go to the board first. Supervisor Bone and then Supervisor Arroyo.
Boy, wouldn't that look great on the recruitment process? Apply and get hired in four weeks or three weeks. If you want a job now, if you're qualified, start putting that up at Humboldt State. I'm just, I lost my screen. I'd like to make a motion to accept staff's recommendation. Just, yeah, just do, and authorize Director of Human Resources to finalize all documents required by the California Department of Human Resources.
Okay, so we have a motion, as I understand it, to adopt the resolution attached to authorize the Director of HR to finalize all documents, allocate one full-time equivalent to this process, and also authorize a letter to be going out. Do we have a second?
A second. I do have a question about item three is the only item, or recommendation three, which is allocating the full-time equivalent person. My understanding was that it might take a little bit of time to get us out of one system into the other. I understand we need that person once we're handling more of those ourselves. Do we need them before that? Like, is it an immediate need or is it a future need?
The plan is to, we're already recruiting for the position. And we would have pulled it down had you not approved it, which we can do, and very much want to get the person in the door as quickly as possible to learn all our processes. And then also, this is going to be a big change, so we want to have someone sort of there feeling all the things that we have to do along the way so they understand this and can be ready and prepared when we're.
I trust you. Thank you. I appreciate that.
All right, let's do a roll call vote, please.
Thank you. Supervisor Bone.
Yes, on this very quick item.
Supervisor Bushnell? Yes. Supervisor Arroyo?
Yes.
Supervisor Wilson?
Yes.
Supervisor Madron?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carries 5-0.
Thank you, folks, for all your hard work. Appreciate it. All right, so with that, we're going to read into the record the closed session items and take public comment, and then we'll be in recess.
It is the intention of the board to meet in closed session pursuant to California Government Code Section 54956.9D4 in order to discuss the intention of litigation in three potential cases. It's also the intention of the board to meet in closed session pursuant to Government Code Section 54956.9D1 in order to discuss existing litigation in the cases of Kathy Childs versus the County of Humboldt et al., case number 1:23-CV-02836-RMI, and County of Humboldt versus Kathy Childs et al., Humboldt County Superior Court Case Number CV2300847, and the Southern Humboldt Community Healthcare District versus the County of Humboldt et al., Humboldt County Superior Court Case CV2201351.
Thank you very much, County Administrative Officer. And there is no hands up in Zoom, so we'll go to those here in the audience today for comment. Welcome.
I'm glad we got clarity on there. There's three potential case, but it's cases. So anyway, let's put the agenda. The public is always curious, it sounds like we are suing someone else, according to this one, clarity. And we're always curious, you know, there are things you can tell the public that as far as when you are suing somebody, and these things, you're not required to necessarily. But I think the public kind of has a right to know. That's my feeling of our money and time being spent on certain topics. I guess they come to light someday. Maybe do public records request on how much it costs us to do these. Regarding item number three, this is the Kathy Childs case, and I've, obviously, that's why Scott Miles left the room because I believe he was named in that particular one. And item number four, which I recommend you settle out, number four was when I think a FOPO was done, where the County of Humboldt was suing Kathleen Childs in local court, and this case is going to federal court. And in my opinion, still exists that I think you basically helped make her case by filing litigation. That's why the public is always curious. And when you have three cases of litigation you're filing and what the cause is, and anyway, transparency is kind of a nice thing, it's not always required, but when our money's being spent. being spent to sue somebody, I think maybe that's a little bit different than when we are defending ourselves. Thank you for the opportunity to speak.
Thank you for your comments. And with that, we're going to go into recess, and we will be back sometime after 2 o'clock. So notice I left that open, sometime after 2 for our final matter, I3, on the Friends of the Eel River mitigation and remediation grant fund. So with that, we are in recess. Okay, welcome back from recess. We are back in session, and we'll have a report out on the closed session items from our CIO, Hayes.
Thank you, Chairman Madron. With regards to item G2, the board voted unanimously to approve the initiation of litigation in three cases. The specific actions defendants and other parties shall once formally commenced be disclosed upon inquiry, unless to do so would jeopardize the county's ability to effectuate service of process on one or more unserved parties, or that to do so would jeopardize the county's ability to conclude existing settlement negotiations to its advantage as set forth in Government Code Section 54957.1A2. There was no reportable action taken with regards to item G3 through G5.
All right, thank you very much. And we have one item left on our agenda, and that is I3, allocation of water quality improvement grant funds from the Friends of the Eel River mitigation and remediation grant fund, and supplemental budget in fiscal year 2324, four fifths vote required. And Director Ford, I believe you have a presentation along with Ms. Minell.
Thank you, Chairman Madron, members of the Board of Supervisors, John Ford and Karen Minell, with the Planning and Building Department to bring this back to you. This is a follow-up item. And just in the sake of time, I'm going to let Ms. Minell go through what's been done since the board gave us direction from July 11.
All right, welcome.
All right, good afternoon, Board. So on July 11, if you remember, we brought to you the slate of grant applications for the Friends of the Eel River. Some of those applications were approved that day, and there was direction from your board for us to revisit the applications that weren't approved, especially those, according to the motion, those were located in the priority watersheds to give those applicants a chance to revisit their applications and improve any deficiencies they had. So staff did reach out to those applicants, gave them opportunity to revise their applications. We had four of those unfunded applicants who did submit additional information. Our recommendation before you today is, based on the motion of only considering those applications in the priority watersheds for the Friends of the Eel River, is for no additional grant funding. And that is due to the four applicants, two of them not being within the priority watershed areas, and the other two not being projects that we, that we would recommend funding for. The reasons for the non-funding are in the table in the staff report. However, we are presenting an alternative recommendation, number one, which would give consideration to the projects that are not in the priority watersheds. We have funded other projects that were not in priority watersheds because the water quality benefits of those projects were sufficient enough to not make that a requirement. It's not a requirement of the settlement agreement, but it is a priority of the settlement agreement. And so if your board chooses, we have an alternative recommendation to fund two of the projects not located in the priority watersheds. The total of that funding for the recommendation, or alternative recommendation, number one, would be $39,109, with the remaining amount going to Public Works. That remaining amount would be $247,899. Sorry, $247,899. So that concludes our report. I'm here for any questions you may have.
Great, thank you. Are there any questions from the board at this point? None. It seems like a pretty straightforward item. We've got a couple of options to consider. So at this point, I'll go to public comment. I do not see any hands up in Zoom, so I'll go to those here in the audience today that would like to make comment. Welcome.
I understand the process here, the people from, the people, plaintiffs in this case have a seat at the table, but not a vote. And I would, I would, hopefully, they've endorsed, if you're going to go to ones out of the watershed, especially those have been endorsed by this group. If not, I would not move forward with them until you have projects they endorse or are comfortable with, that are, if they're not within the watershed that the plaintiffs were addressing the situation on. And it did sound like a heck of a lot of it's going to Public Works, possibly not in the watershed, is what I understood correctly. And again, I would greatly question that. These watersheds are quite extensive. You would think that Public Works could do something within that watershed, be it replacing culverts, other things to mitigate water, things in that area. Maybe I misunderstood the comment. Sometimes the public can't hear unless those mics are right in front of your face. It was a little difficult for me, maybe just a little ringing in my ear. Noticed they were turned on, but they were, if they could speak a little louder, then we could hear. So anyway, that's my concern, you know, that there was a purpose in a watershed, and I think you should properly remain within that watershed, or at least get an okay to move out of it by the Friends of the Eel River. Thank you for my opportunity to speak.
Thank you. And I believe that was covered in the staff report. Could you respond to that, please?
Certainly. The Friends of the Eel River staff were present during the committee meetings to consider these four revised applications, and they were comfortable with the outcome of the no recommendation based on not being located in the priority watershed. They were also comfortable with funding the two projects that had substantial water quality improvements based on their applications. The funding that would go to Public Works in either case will go to pre-identified projects that Public Works has that are located in the priority watersheds for culvert replacement and other road improvements, but those are located in the priority watersheds.
Okay, either option is supported. It's up to the board. Thank you. And more comment, please.
Thank you, Supervisors. Kelly Flatus with Margrow Advisors. Hopefully, the clerk was able to give you a copy of the presentation we provided for our public comment. It shows on the first slide the applicant eligibility for this grant. The only eligibility criteria was a cannabis applicant or permit holder who was not in the abatement process. There is no mention of priority watersheds for eligibility of this grant. When we look at the next section, the ranking criteria for funding available was, was where priority was established. Here, impacted and refused watersheds are mentioned as a factor in ranking projects. There is no mention of disqualifying them for funding due to this criteria. On the July 11, Board of Supervisors' motion, it was to allocate the $287,008 for reconsideration for other projects that are within priority watersheds. Supervisor Arroyo said, emphasized, quote, "And I want to note, I did say within priority watersheds," unquote. Although this was never listed as a criteria of the original grant program, her motion was for priority watersheds, and not impacted refuse watersheds, as is currently stated in the county staff report. In our comments, we provided a map of the priority watersheds for Fish and Wildlife and State Water Board for the county. And these watersheds are defined as historically having high density of unregulated cannabis cultivation cumulatively affecting watershed conditions, which means that projects within these areas would fall in line with the intention of this grant. We want to point out the priority watershed of the lower South Fork Eel River, which includes areas of Garberville. And if you look at the lower east portion of that watershed, you will see that Eagle Creek Ranch and Aldebaran's Gaze fall within that priority watershed. So as a result, we believe that these two grant projects do meet the criteria of the board motion, and that they should be fully supported, $24,486 for Eagle Creek Ranch, and $17,040 for Aldebaran's Gaze. The remaining funds left would be $245,482, almost a quarter of a million dollars for Public Works, in addition to the half million that has already been taken from this grant for their road maintenance program. We'd like to point out that there is no need to further restrict requesting of these funds, as is mentioned in the alternative motion, that these actually should be fully funded, as other applicants have received full funding with permit fees in their budgets. We thank you for your consideration. These are good projects in support of their local communities, and we appreciate your support. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And there was a hand came up just seconds after I said that on Zoom, so I'm going to allow it, and that is 5000, star six to unmute, and you have three minutes. There you go, welcome.
Thank you very much. My name is Robert May from Eagle Creek Ranch in Southern Humboldt County. Thank you to Kelly at Margrow and the staff at Margrow. I'd also like to thank county staff, State Fish, Wildlife, Water Boards, Friends of the Eel River, and the board for reconsidering our application for funding. I want to clarify that there's two different recommendations before the board today. We are respectfully requesting the board unanimously approve staff's alternative recommendation, number one. It's easy to lose sight of what's at stake in these grants. I'd like to paint a quick picture with you. Imagine a beautiful dappled hillside high above South Fork Eel. You're driving along an old ranch road through cool forests in the winter, and suddenly you emerge next to a football-sized field of debris where two big shotgun culverts are blowing apart hillsides during winter rains, sending torrents of sediment rushing down the mountain. You're watching as 20-foot banks topple into the Brown River, bawling old growth trees in the steep gullies, sending thousands of cubic yards of sediment into South Fork Eel, choking salmon nests, and destroying downstream homes and infrastructure. Your approval of alternative recommendation one will fix these two 55-year-old culverts, protect key tributary habitat, including South Fork Eel and the Encre, employ local contractors, equipment operators, engineers, and directly contribute to Southern Humboldt's shattered economy. Brian, Deb, and I have worked hard in good faith to develop solid applications with the amazing team at Margrow. We've paid our taxes, paid our fees, invested in engineering, biology, and staff reports. We respectfully request the board votes unanimously to approve alternative recommendations, number one. Our projects are several ready, and we'd like to get going. Thank you so much.
Thank you, commenter. And we have 7108, star six to unmute. There you go, welcome.
Thank you. I just got in on the tail end of it. I'm not sure what all this is, but both of these projects are in my neighborhood, and I think that I really want to support them and hope that they'll get the funds to be able to deal with those two culverts. So, thank you.
Thank you. And we'll bring it back to the board at this point. Supervisor Bushnell.
Thank you. I would just like to make a motion for, I'm a little confused, I'm looking at the recommendations, but I'd like to make a motion for the recommendations plus the two projects and the remaining funds going to Public Works.
So that's alternative one?
Yes. And I, okay, I see that, but I, okay. That would be my motion.
Okay. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Any further discussion from the board? We have a motion by Supervisor Bushnell, and a second by Supervisor Bone. Supervisor Wilson?
Arroyo.
Arroyo.
He was pointing at me.
The one at the end.
Thank you. We try. So I am a little confused just between the two public, a couple of the public comments here. It sounded like one commenter was concerned that some of the recommendations didn't include priority watersheds, and then someone who called in and thanked them was saying that they were in a priority watershed. So can you help me understand kind of what the deal is with the priority watershed situation here?
Certainly. When the settlement was agreed to, the original settlement with Friends of the Eel River, it referred to Resolution 1843, which specifically outlined and delineated the priority watersheds. And they were mapped and described in that resolution. And those are impacted and refuge watersheds. And so when the motion was made, it was, that was, those were the priority watersheds that we were talking about. Our understanding was that's the watersheds that we were talking about. I'm sure there are priority watersheds for all sorts of things throughout the state, and I think the public speaker was talking about the priority watersheds as delineated by Water Boards or CDFW, which are slightly different than the watersheds in our settlement agreement.
Okay, so the settlement agreement with Friends of the Eel had different, a different priority focus.
Correct.
And this motion does include projects that were deemed acceptable by Friends of the Eel and our staff working together, but are outside of the watersheds that they initially identified.
That's correct. They were deemed worthy projects because of the location and the water quality improvements that they would benefit.
Okay, thank you.
And so just to be clear, a lot of the priority watersheds in our process were tributaries to the South Fork of the Eel, not the entire South Fork of the Eel, whereas this project is in the South Fork of the Eel, but not necessarily in one of those tributary watersheds. I would agree that I think the whole South Fork is highly impaired and needs help. Supervisor Wilson?
Yeah, so, just a clarification, then, Friends of the Eel is in support of the alternatives or not?
Yes.
Yes, I was going to clarify. Okay, thank you. That was it.
Okay, appreciate that. And if I remember reading the staff report correctly, there was some work that needs to be done on one of these properties that's been kind of required for quite some time, has not occurred over about a five-year period. And before this grant money is provided to that applicant, that other work needs to occur first, to show that there's a commitment to getting that done, and then these funds would kick in, right?
That's correct. Actually, for both of the, for the alternative recommendation, number one, both of the grants that are being recommended have a condition of approval. For Aldebaran, it is for them to secure their 401 certificate, but they have everything else. And then for the Eagle Creek, it is to take care of the in-stream work that needs to be completed, and the resource agencies really want to see completed before the grant funds from the Eel River, Friends of the Eel River are released.
Great. Well, I appreciate those conditions, and the applicants, I'm sure, are paying attention and will hopefully take care of all that. Otherwise, the grant funds won't be there. So with that, any further discussion by the board? All right, we have a motion and a second. Can we have a roll call vote, please?
Thank you. Supervisor Madron?
Yes.
Supervisor Wilson?
Yes.
Supervisor Arroyo?
Yes.
Supervisor Bone?
Yep.
And Supervisor Bushnell?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carries five zero.
Okay, and before we adjourn, because I think that's the end of our agenda, I want to close today's meeting in honor of the fallen firefighter up on the Smith River complex. And also, I want to close in honor of all of the personnel, firefighters, and everybody else that are working to support protecting our communities on the front lines. So with that, we are adjourned.